Well, welcome to this meeting of the South Burlington School Board. What we would usually do now is comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda.
Well, your agenda is slightly different than that.
I guess that's the case.
So, we would like to interrupt here just a moment, Mr. Cassidy.
All right.
First of all, welcome everybody for being here. As you know, this marks the end of a long era for Mr. Cassidy, 12 years to be exact, and we're very thankful that you've joined us this evening for this celebration. We have a few things we would like to recognize you for and talk about you with, so please endure our time with you. Again, very nice, I want to recognize Mr. Cassidy's wife Becky, and thank you for being here. She's, as you know, has put up with numbers of years of being apart, you know, for many hours. I would hate to add up all those hours, but we thank you for your kind sharing of Richard.
Thank you. My pleasure.
So, I want to just read an appreciation. This is a plaque that we want to give you, Rich, and again, like you have done for so many others along your way.
I guess I know how this is done.
So, "South Burlington School District, an appreciation for Mr. Richard Cassidy. Your fateful, willing service and thoughtful approach to all challenges are greatly appreciated by your colleagues. You have shown us through your example that when there is a need, people of goodwill become involved to make a difference. We thank you for your 12 years of dedicated service to the students of the South Burlington School District." Thank you very much.
I'm going to call next on, actually Martin to share something with you.
We are going to give you an opportunity to say a few words too.
Oh, well, okay. I'll make something up.
And before I hand this over to Rich, I just wanted to say a few things. I've had the pleasure of being on the board for three years with you, and I've seen how much you've brought to the board, the assets that you've brought to the board. Your legal knowledge has been great. Your enthusiasm towards the job and towards doing the right thing for our kids as well has been super. Also, having you as a chair has been very important in the last few years when we've had lots of, I suppose the school board always has lots of big issues happening, but it seems like I came into three years of methadone clinic negotiations that didn't go right, et cetera. But your experience from your many years really was helpful in seeing us through those times. And also, your tolerance and open-mindedness, because you and I have not always agreed, and we've disagreed on some pretty big and important issues, but you have always been very open, to my viewpoint, though different, and have respected my viewpoint, and have even said that it's reasonable, and you've even said that, you've even said that I could be right. Though, if I say I have been right, but in your view, it's been very reasonable as well. But actually, the most important quality that I've really noted over the last three years is that, has been your good humor. And I have found out that being a board member is not fun. It's not a fun job, but your good humor through thick and thin has made it bearable, and it's made it fine to actually come here. So, any event, we have a photo where we have lots of signatures. I wanted pictures of all the board members, but they, because I'm not looking very photogenic these days, they declined and put the facility on it. So, we'd like you to have this to remember the district by. But thank you.
Thank you, Martin. There's more, huh? There can't be more. That is really lovely. It's just really, very lovely.
So, I've had the benefit of working with Rich for the last couple of years, and I've also attended board meetings for many years, and I just have always appreciated the tone of respect that you set with the board and with the community, and your appreciation for listening to many perspectives, and really doing that in a respectful way, Rich, and I appreciate that very much. And also, just as a parent, I've had two children who graduated, and I'm just really appreciative of your leadership in our district, and that my children benefit from that as well. And in recognition of your 12 years, I don't have a diploma.
I think I got one.
But there's a saying at the high school that I've seen quite a bit on a lot of the senior cars the last few weeks, that "Once a rebel, always a rebel." So, this is a gift from the board for you to have and always remember the rebels.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that very much. I usually wear a hat inside, but tonight, I'll make an exception. Thank you so much. There can't be more.
So, I get the really fun, really fun job. As grateful as we are for you, Rich, we know that behind every good man is a stellar woman. And we're very grateful to you, Becky, for the sacrifices that you've made, letting us have him for this period of time. And on behalf of my colleagues here and the whole community at large, thank you, and we wish you many Wednesday nights of early dinner.
Rich, I have a presentation from the VSB, and it's a Service Award for Exceptional School Board Service. The Vermont School Boards Association presents this award to Richard Cassidy in recognition of dedication and exemplary service to Vermont children as a board member for the South Burlington School Board from 2001 to 2013. And on a personal note...
Oh, my goodness. Wow. Well, thank you.
And now comes some opportunity for you, Mr. Cassidy.
All right.
If you so desire.
Well, I intended when I wrote my letter to the community to say everything I had to say, but of course I didn't. The other paper is a very wonderful outlet, but they limit you to 350 words. We're not so limited here. And then when I go to graduation, you know, Pat Burke tells me I only have 30 seconds. I kid him that I'm going to take 20 or 25 minutes, and we come out under one minute. So, there are a few things that I would say. First, thank you, Becky, for making this possible, because if you hadn't been willing to let me take the time, it couldn't have happened. So, thank you. And second, thank you, my board colleagues present and former, all of whom I appreciate I'd say one thing that risks, I suppose, marring the occasion, and that is that service on this board is hard. It really is hard, and I have great respect for the people I work with, because it's hard. And I don't say that to say, "Oh, poor me." People say to me all the time, "Well, you know, it's a thankless job." That has not been my experience. Our community has been really wonderful to me about my service on this board, and I appreciate that. And the support that we get from our superintendents, present and former, I see Bruce Chapman, who was the first superintendent I served with, and John Everett, who was the most recent one, and of course, our president David, the support we get from the administration is really wonderful. So, if it wasn't hard, it wouldn't really be worthwhile. I mean, you know, that's the truth. And I say to the community that, you know, it takes people like the folks that I serve with to step up and spend the time and devote the energy and take the risk, frankly, that's involved with serving, for this board to be able to provide local community leadership to our schools. And so, everything you've done for me, you share it. I'll look at it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We do have some refreshments, and I think this is, we do have time on our agenda. It may not feel like that in the other end, but we do have some time on our agenda to do some sharing.
How late is he going to be?
Well, let's stand and recess then for a few minutes. Thank you. So, we'll go back into, I'll call this meeting back into session, or order, or whatever it is. And now, I'll ask again if there are comments from the public regarding items that are not otherwise on the agenda. Yes, ma'am?
Hello, Mike, do I say this? Sorry.
Please.
Sorry. My name is Sarah Culver, and I'm new to South Burlington. We just moved here in April. I'm here to discuss the fact that I would like my daughter to have the chance to choose her elementary school. However, we missed the deadline, because being new to South Burlington, we did not receive the letter as to when the cutoff date was for our school choice option. She did go to Chamberlain for a kindergarten assessment, and that's how, I believe, we received the letter in the first place. However, the way it worked was our mail was not forwarded to our new address in time for us to have the letter in order to make that school choice. I started making phone calls about, I would say, about a week after the school choice date. I called Holly Ruhel first, then I called Susan Luck, because we would like her to go to Central from Chamberlain. They both denied my request for the change. I then contacted Mr. Young, who also denied the request, and so, I'm here to make the request again, for her to have the option for the choice.
Well, thank you for presenting your concern to our board. I did get your email today and have shared it with Mr. Young, and I don't know if you want to add anything to what we've learned here, or at this point or not, David.
Yeah, I think, again, this is, I think Sarah has alluded, and many of you know, under the current AYP, adequate yearly progress, this is a situation that is available. Both Orchard and Chamberlain are identified, which provide that option for parents who have children moving in, or during a certain period of time, we had set a date of May 3rd, and again, feeling that that was an appropriate date for us to inform and allowing us to have the opportunity to resource appropriately the classes. So, again, I denied it based on the deadline. I think Sarah's chairs review some appropriate concerns. My desire is not to, you know, ever be in a situation where we're punishing, you know, children, and certainly, we know that behind children are moms and dads and guardians that, you know, need to support them. What I would say is that you allow me the opportunity to reevaluate, you know, if the board's inclined to allow me to do so, I'll look at currently, we're going to talk later on in the agenda about student enrollment. And again, I feel that I need to be mindful of all decisions that are happening around students that are within and students that are moving. And so, I would say that you allow me to look at that and get back to Sarah around that. If it's not favorable, then certainly she can be back to you, you know, with further concerns based on my response.
Sarah, I would just add to what David said, that, you know, the board tries to see its role in terms of, one, of setting a direction, providing leadership to the district, and tries to make decisions like this to be the decisions of our superintendent. It certainly has the right to overrule the superintendent on a particular decision if it chooses to do that, but it's very hard for us to step in and overrule the professional judgment of the professionals we hire to make these judgments. We know, David, to be a person in good faith, and that you'll make every effort to try and see if your concerns can be accommodated with other, when balanced with the other concerns that this district faces. So, we do thank you for bringing it to our attention. I won't be in this chair very long, but I'm sure...
I was crying, and I don't even know you.
I'm sure that whoever is will see to it that you are heard if you end up remaining dissatisfied with the superintendent's decision. Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public regarding matters not on the agenda? Okay.
Can I just raise?
Yes.
I don't know if I should have already done this, but there is a point that I'd like to raise regarding the Form-Based Code work.
Okay.
If we amend the agenda, should I just raise the issue?
We have an amendment, actually, that needs to be dropped.
We do have an amendment, a couple of amendments, don't we? So, let's talk about the agenda for a moment. We are not going to do Policy D6 harassment of employees tonight, because we haven't heard back from the attorney who was reviewing the final draft. So, that will pass beyond my opportunity to vote against it, or for it. So, that comes off the agenda. We're also going to add to the agenda, and I guess it would be on the consent agenda, David, the new hires.
Correct.
So, we have a list of new hires, and we'll review those at the time of the consent agenda. And there's a cryptic note here. Okay, I think we got it. Okay. And so, what you'd like to add to it is a report on Form-Based Code?
Yeah, it's a question, an issue that I need to raise with the board.
You know, I think we have time to do it without...
It shouldn't take...
Without objection, we'll put it in instead of Item 10. Okay? And there's no objection, so that's what we'll do. And that takes us to Item 6, which is population enrollment projections. I see a familiar face. And I don't know, David, do you want to say anything before we...
I do.
Okay. Introduce our guest.
Yep. So, as most of you know, I've been talking about the 2020 plan for quite some time, and as I told you earlier, I mean, I'm trying to put things in what I would say appropriate priority order. And the work of our district is obviously to educate children, and I think it's very important that I, on your behalf, should become very astutely aware of population projections, enrollment projections, now and into the future. So, Bill Smith is here joining us, and as you know, Bill has had a long history in this work with many, many school districts around, and actually has a long history with us prior to 2007. And had John Everett stayed, you know, John was interested to see kind of where things are at, and I think it's very nice that we've had a slight hiatus from Bill, and then the opportunity to reaffirm kind of the numbers that we've been working with. That said, I also want to just recognize a couple other things, that I've been working, you know, with the city, as you know, we have been working with the city, but I've also recently been connecting with Kevin Dorn, who's here tonight, actually. I'd like to recognize Kevin and our interim city manager, and Tom Hubbard also, who's here, that is the assistant. And again, we've been talking a lot about just where we are and how we can continue to move forward. I don't believe it's in the best interest of the district to have population projections discussed or shared in isolation of the city. The city, and you know, Martin brings up a point here in Agenda Item 10, that we've just amended on Form-Based Code. The city currently is in interim zoning. They're looking at open space. They're looking at Form-Based Codes, a variety of these items that could essentially significantly affect our enrollment or city population, where things go, how that happens. So, I think it's very important that that happen. And currently, you know, our conversations, which, when our next Steering Committee meeting happens, you'll have the opportunity here a little bit more about that. But without further ado, we have about 20 minutes or so. We have a little time for questions. I do feel it's really important, and I'd like to take you or allow Bill to take you through about 15 slides or so?
12.
Thank you, about enrollment projections. And again, we'll leave some time at the end for you to ask us some questions. So, without further ado, Bill Smith.
Bill, you're going to use this right here?
Yeah.
Well, if you don't mind, I'll let me go grab a piece of cake and sit off in the shop.
There you go, all right.
Why don't you get to eat one? Okay.
How many of these have you done, Bill?
Oh.
You haven't kept track?
I pretty much do the major districts in Chittenden County, with the exception of Chittenden East, and I've been doing it since the early 80s, which I started here. Those of you with as much gray hair as I have may remember the Citizens Committee at that time, that was talking about closing down an elementary school, and there was a lot of contention about which one. And it turns out that once we looked at the numbers, you needed all three of them, and it was just a matter of time, so they were in law. So, it's always good to sort of have a sense of where you're going and be comfortable with why the population might be, have that shape as far as quantity goes. This is going to be a sort of, here's the answer first, and if we want to get into, how did you get to the answer, I've got some of those that we'll talk about, but generally speaking, we start at the highest level and kind of move down. For those of you who have seen these before, they'll be somewhat familiar as far as the format goes. For those that haven't, I'll take you through it briefly. Every chart will tend to have a history, and most of them will go back to 1990.
Oh, yeah, it's going to...
Interesting. Touch me, would like to insert. Okay. X. X. So, don't touch the screen. Okay. Wow, that's cool. That's a whiteboard, isn't it? I love it. All right. History is, I always have to do things differently. One time, it was a television set, and actually, it was static electricity, and it was zapping me. I was over in Colchester. So, this, for instance, is K through 12 enrollment, and there's a data point for October enrollment for each year, and the year is the October of that year, so it would be, you know, the school year would be one year beyond that. So, it's 1991, et cetera. The last data point on here was the 2012-2013 districts enrollment. So, basically, what I'm projecting in these, which is determined by the red line here, is the enrollment in October for each of the following years out through 2030. So, David's timeframe is here on 2020, and basically, once you get out here, it's based on what the assumptions are, so it's as good as your assumptions are. The set of triangles down here are, the last time I did this model and the projections that I made at that time, which was in the fall of 2007, I did those when Mr. Everett came, and he pretty much was giving you the projections. Notice that, you know, one reason you do these updates is so you can see, it's usually only one-year difference, so you can see where it was and where it'd end up being. So, we'll see in the charts that come through here why there was a difference there. But fundamentally, the bottom line here is that the enrollment over the next 10, 15, 20 years will move in a fairly tight range, around 2,200 students. Now, these are just resident students, okay? You get tuition students at the high school will tend to be added to this. I have a chart later that shows an independent assessment of that that brings it up another 100 or so, okay? So, basically, you're dealing with a stable situation, and I hope to be able to convince you that that's a reasonable estimate, okay? So, we tend to go in grade grouping, so here's the K through 12, or the K through 5, again, showing that there was a fairly large jump. This was sort of the baby boom echo, and then the falling off as the births fell off. I'll show a little bit of that later. What I found absolutely fascinating about this is the projection five years ago or six years ago, and the one that I'm doing now are essentially the same, okay? Somewhat stable. That's somewhat comforting, okay? And the fact that your entry student population is pretty well predictable and has been for some time. I had predicted a little bit of a bump, which didn't happen, but this long-term projection right here being stable was actually quite comforting. So, again, your elementary school population being about the 950, that's across the three schools, pretty much will be in a very narrow range around that for quite some time. Now, I'd like to point out, as David said, there are some things going on as far as development goes and things like that. If you're doing an interpretation of this, and where, you know, all economists will tell you, is it a risk to the upside or the downside? I tend to believe that the risk here would tend to be to the upside, because you're probably going to take conscious measures to try to encourage a tax-based growth, et cetera, things like that. But the important thing to remember is, is that you've, in this particular configuration, you've accounted for a couple 100 more of those in the configuration that you have today, right? So, generally speaking, you're not going to have a problem with going to having maybe 100 more students or so, if that happens. Middle grades, again, moving in a fairly tight range around, you know, 500 to 525. Important to point out here is that the, you know, the gradation that I use here is 25, which is about a classroom, right? So, you know, and given the fact that this is over multiple sections and things like that, you know, the assignment to particular sections of classrooms would be fairly, you know, you'd be able to accommodate that. It's a stable projection, okay? Now, high school was kind of interesting. The trend that looked like happened based in 2007, where there was this drop-off, it looked like the underlying numbers were going to show, last time I did this, there being a continual drop-off down into the 650 range. Well, it turns out that that didn't happen, and that was most of the difference between the two lines, between the 2007 projection and my current one, that were on the K through 12. So, it was basically, there's more kids at the high school, but again, the projection is, is moving in a fairly narrow range, 725 to 750, and you've had, you know, 875 or so at one point in time, back in the early 2000s, which was when the baby boom echo basically hit.
Is it resident?
Resident students, again, resident students. And I think the next one does the tuition students, right. Really quite interesting, the three schools that I do projections for now, Essex High School, South Burlington, and Colchester, essentially compete for the tuition students that are within their reach. And they do different things to do them. You guys, and, you know, one, if one district wins, which Colchester's been doing, okay, another district loses, and I think that's basically been Essex and you guys. So, at one point, you had a pretty much the lion's share of these students back here in the early 90s, right? And some of this is due to the base population dropping off a little bit, not a lot. So, most of this is just you fighting for the additional money to come in. This is looking like, again, it'll be in the range of 90 to 100 or so, long-term. This one is more speculative, because it basically is, I look at an underlying population that you're possible to get, look what percentage you are getting, and assume that that percentage will continue on average. So, you basically put those 100 kids on top of the ones that are at the high school, and that's what you get at. The driving force for this is the number of kids that come in at 9th grade, because they tend to be persistent, right? I mean, once they come here, they pretty much stay here. And that class size is, you know, about another 25, so about a quarter of them, as you would expect. And again, there have been some quite wide jumps in ranges in this over the past couple of years, okay? But still, well within what you've had in the past. Next couple of slides, I'm going to go through fairly quickly, because one of the elements, the two elements that go into modeling this population are, you know, how many kids move into the district that weren't here last year? So, grades 1 through 12, K through 11 last year, 1 through 12 this year, and the difference between those two. That's migration. And the other one is, is estimating what the incoming class size is going to be, which is kindergarten. Now, this is where I go into a little bit more depth than Mr. Everett chose to do, and starts with looking at the profile of how many resident births were there, to Chittenden County residents, and that follows a pattern like this. You go back to about 1989 or so, that was the peak of the baby boom echo. It's basically when the women that were baby boom age, sort of, there were the most of them in the cohort that were having children at that age, and so, that's where it came from. Been dropping steadily, and my projections, when I do a county-level model, are that, you know, there'll be between 1,500 and 1,600 births going out through time. Then I look at what percentage of those county births were to South Burlington residents, and this is a very interesting pattern, is early on, it was a fairly high percentage, and it dropped in the 70s to a fairly low percentage, and then was picking up, and then over the past six or seven years or so, it's been a noisy distribution, but pretty flat, if you look at this set of numbers right now. if you look at this set of numbers right here. So I'm projecting that'll be remaining at about 11%. So if you look at the previous chart and say, how many kids are born in Chittenden County? 11% of them will be in, born to South Burlington residents. The next thing in the chart would be, that's the number that will come out there. So, you know, 170 to 180 sort of over time. So the next thing you have to figure out is how many of them show up in kindergarten? That's five to six years later, okay? And that's what I call entry student capture. I do an average of the five and six years. And again, something that's in the range above 100% basically means there are probably families moving into the city, bringing their preschool-aged children with them, okay? And that was the phenomenon back in the, in the early 90s, early to mid 90s. Recently, it's been under 100%. That basically means, on average, the children that are being born in the city of South Burlington, not all of them are showing up in kindergarten, only about 90%, 85% of them. And that's one of the things that could change with some policy changes at the, at the city level. Now, all of those things rolled together basically gets you to, here's the size of the kindergarten class as it comes in, okay? So 150 or so kindergarten students. And sort of the last slide I have here, I think this is the last one. Remember I said there were two elements to estimating this population? The entry level students and how many new students you get that weren't here last year that are not associated with the kindergarten class. And that's been running around 50, 48 or so. Call attention to the fact that the last time I did this is in 2007, that number was actually fairly, was around zero. Did it again. And was one of the reasons why my projections were a bit low. So bottom line is, is that the kindergarten class tends to be about 50 students smaller than the graduating senior class, because you could sort of add to them as you go through time. So a larger senior class is replaced by a smaller kindergarten class. But then each of the other classes get, in aggregate, about 50 more students. So it's about parity, it's about evenly, evenly balanced, okay? So now there's quite a bit of detail that goes underneath this. I actually do the percentage migration by class and look for trends and look for what's stable and all this other kind of statistical mumbo jumbo that most of you, your eyes would glaze over and we went into. I also do projections for kindergarten students by each one of the elementary schools and for population of each one of the elementary schools, et cetera, all of which is sort of dependent upon where the district boundary is. We've got the challenge that the lady was talking about there, about the school choice kind of thing that happens here, which is a fairly minor thing from a demographics point of view, but still something that has to be considered, et cetera. And that's sort of the, you know, the general trend that you're dealing with here. So if we sort of get back to, go back to home there. The good news about this is you're not dealing with this, okay? When I first started doing this stuff back in the 80s, this was the shape of the curve. And the hardest thing in the world was predicting this inflection point because you knew it had to happen. It couldn't grow forever, it wasn't, it was like the housing market. The best thing in the world for a planner is to have a stable market if you're trying to get everything else right about it. So this one basically says, you need to look at the fit for the number of students you have right now because that's what you can do. And if you want to do something better, then it's still the same number of students you got to deal with. So whatever program things you got to look at. It basically say you can get back to the important stuff, which is not the numbers. These are just market research, okay? The important stuff is, is what programs do you want to have for what kids and where? And that's basically it, so David?
It's great, Bill, I appreciate you doing that. Again, it's probably a lot, you know, for you. Again, there's a lot more specific information that's very beneficial to me, you know, in the move-forward direction. As I mentioned earlier, we've had a, actually Bill joined us for a meeting with city, with Kevin. I think Tom was there, Kathy Larois, Paul Connor, around looking at this data and having relevance to city projection data. And so I'm feeling that there's, you know, a great connection here to look at our numbers and to validate them and to understand what implications might be through policy, through decisions that the city makes and what might be, if any, but we'll be able to look at that, what might be projection or enrollment changes. So with that, I don't know if anyone has any particular questions for Bill at this point. Again, this for me is a very important component of kind of the move-forward direction and solidifying kind of what I'm going to determine, the stacked, the stacked approach of, you know, city endeavors, student enrollment, financial ability to pay, currently where we are, programs that we want to have, facility stewardship. And the kind of, you get that stacked approach by year is really what I'm trying to achieve. So that said?
Bill, as I look at the chart and think about the last decade, what I see is our student population often, I don't know exactly what the numbers are, I think it's about 8% in that time period overall.
Yeah, sort of.
And that happens against the background of the city population going up about 10%, which is a very curious relationship. I don't know whether it's within your realm of expertise to tell us, you know, why it's working that way. And I suppose it's not really our concern, but the question that it raises for school board in a school district is, you know, are we right that it's going to look pretty stable even though we seem to have considerable population growth in the community?
The demographics sort of trends, both nationwide and state of Vermont and here locally, tend to be able to measure the adult population continuing to grow. So think about it as, I got three kids at home, I did have three kids at home. Right now, it's just me and my wife, okay? All three of my children went out into the community and became homeowners and members of the community and had jobs and things like that. And, you know, some of them moved to other communities, some of them are still in Essex where I am. But none of them have kids, okay? And although that's sort of a burden to bear for me, my wife, you know, that I'm not going to pass on the name, although it's what the kids want to do. It's really important to understand that, you know, family formation type stuff is not happening at the rate that it used to. As a matter of fact, the fertility rate that goes behind those birth rates that are there is actually way below replacement. It's closer to what it is in Western Europe. And Vermont, given its demographic makeup, doesn't have the groups of people who tend to have more children. And that, so a reasonable scenario, you know, Kevin could jump in on this or any other city people, would be that what you're seeing are people moving in here because it's closer where their jobs are, but they don't necessarily have children. Is that reasonable? Yep.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Dan.
We hear a lot about declining school population in the state of Vermont. This doesn't seem to be the case here in South Burlington.
That's correct.
Is this unique to Chittenden County?
There, actually it isn't. There are two profiles here and in some of the districts that I do, it is the declining one. Basically, the difference is, is whether that migration component is actually happening or not. For instance, in the Chittenden South Supervisor Union, which is a fairly large district, they're dropping like a rock. And the reason that they are is basically it's, the seniors are graduating, the kindergartners are coming in and nobody else is, their migration rates are zero or negative. This profile, Essex Junction, Essex Town look more like this, they're more stable, related to where people tend to be moving in with the children that are actually there. Statewide, it still is, I mean, Tom Cavett talks about the 1% per year decline, but it is different in every school district. And one of the reasons I recommend that these be kept up to date, for instance, I absolutely want to hear the October 1st numbers when the kids show up. I want to see how good I did, right? I want to see if it's in the margin of error, et cetera. But sort of there, there's two classes of communities. The ones that are really having the demographic profile, it's like the whole state, which is no in-migration. So therefore, it's only natural change. And as, you know, basically if the incoming class is smaller and smaller each year or smaller than the graduating class, then it's a decline. And communities that are still attracting population because they have affordable housing, immediate jobs, et cetera. Makes sense? Yes?
How do you work into your calculations such factors as job growth in the area as the city's efforts towards having additional affordable housing? The airport zone where houses are being torn down? You know, those kind of known things that are data inputs that one can look at. How does that factor in? And then how are such contingencies as, if the F-35 comes to the airport, will there be more houses that are taken down? I mean, how do those things work into your projections?
Generally speaking, all of those factors are aggregated into the migration rate. So how many new kids or in or out do you actually see from year to year? And since things related to housing and population tend to be fairly slow-moving, you know, if you have a multi-year average of things, you tend to say, well, this is the outcome of all of those things in the aggregate. Now, of course, you can have disruptive things that go on. And that's one of the reasons why, you know, it's a classic thing that you do if you're doing quality control in an industrial plant, is you do a control chart, you basically look for whether it moves and if it's shifted to a new place. So that's why you sort of watch this. So for instance, if the, well, it's an example here, the, that. This looked like a new trend at the time. It looked like we had shifted from, except for this data point, a net 50 or so, the historical level, to a net zero or even negative. And this would have implied that something was going on in these four years that, where the baseline had shifted, something had happened. Now, you know, in retrospect, if you look at this, actually, I don't know what would have reflected this. This might have been the housing thing, it might, you know, it's a little early to have been the stock market crash and that kind of stuff, because that was late '08, okay? So it would have been, I mean, here it was already recovering by '08. So something happened here and although I don't know exactly what it is, it's a ceteris paribus modeling approach. All things being equal, this is what the future looks like, okay? So now, when I said, you know, the risk is to the upside, it basically said, and again, you've got to look at the range in which this moves. There's only one data point, okay, that is, you know, higher than about 60 or so here. So if I started seeing, you know, 100 up here, right? Consistently from year to year, then you start looking at that and you say, wait a minute, we've got a new level that we have to deal with, right? So passes prologue is basically it, right?
Martin, what you're talking about, that was exactly kind of what, you know, I'm wanting to, you know, to deepen our discussion about city and school. And so currently, as you know, city center is, you know, major movement, you know, for us. What is that going to look like? What's going to be within that? Again, form-based codes have a component of that. What is currently happening to the airport? What might be the idea and choices for us into the longer future? And will those decisions that we make, what might be the impact that they have on student enrollment? In-migration or out-migration? You know, if we significantly changed, you know, the things that surround our schools to be disadvantageous, it's likely we would have out-migration. So, you know, that's actually what I am excited about and having a deeper discussion with the city. And this connects back to our master planning and visioning that we did six years ago and the agreement that we have with the city to really talk about them and expand that thinking so that we're very much, you know, collaborating on that work, so.
And I've done some research, when I was at UVO in my master's program, I did some research into this, into demographic multipliers and, you know, looking for a relationship of what was a predictor of that. And it turns out that there's a threshold effect of how many additional housing units you have to get in a community before it actually starts to affect the schools. Up to a certain point, it basically only accounts for the people you're losing because they graduate, right? And so it's a matter of housing turnover. That community was Williston and that, their effect is long gone, okay? So basically, you have to have a really, really hefty year-over-year housing growth of, you know, hundreds per year, like they were popping them out of the cornfields in Williston here years ago, before it actually, you know, pushes through to your schools. So the, you know, generally speaking, your population is predictable by those that are already here. That's generally the case, that's been my experience over the past 30 years.
Is there a reason, can you articulate some overwhelming reason why we lose a significant population from live birth to kindergarten?
That's a very good question. I can't posit why that's happening. It is, it is the case in Burlington and Winuski, okay? They basically only, you know, two out of three kids that are born there show up in the school system, they're in the 60% range. You know, generally speaking, it has to do with, at least it's been explained to me, the housing that people are in when they first have their children is not big enough for them. And so it's a matter of where they have to move in order to have the extra bedroom for the extra kid and things like that. And that used to be, you moved out of Burlington, you went to South Burlington. So it's, again, it's an affordable housing issue, that kind of stuff. There tends to be a ring effect and, you know, how far out do you have to go? Do you have to go to Heinsberg, okay? Right?
And that walks into some of those same conversations that I, you know, we'll talk more about around affordable housing. And part of this, the city's desire to say, you know, what is the capture? We have a lot of families that are looking for a certain price range and if it's not available as they're moving up, then that may be a major attributing factor to our stability into the future.
That's a really logical inference, you know, that that's what's happening in South Burlington. I take it it's really not in your range of expertise to figure that out? Do you know where we might turn to figure that out? How we might do that if we wanted to?
More of a, you know, the suggestion I make to people that want to dig deeper into this and if you want to spend some money on it is, any economic consulting firm, you know, Tom Cavett, Art Wolf, those people, you know, well-known names, they tend to have the, you know, the background and the ability to kind of dig into this stuff at a level below that and they do it on a contract basis.
Do you account for the residents that may be in private school?
No, no, these are only the public school residents. Again, part of the capture ratio thing tends, could be that those are kids that go to Prokial School or other kinds of private school. Those numbers, when I look at them, the census had not been very large. I haven't looked at them recently because I haven't seen the numbers in that level of detail from the 2010 census yet.
Well, I want to thank you, Bill, for doing that. Again, more to follow, I think, again, to keep you posted on where we're headed. And again, our collaboration with the city, with you also there was very helpful, I appreciate it. I think it's safe to say, and Bill hears this probably a lot, but he does this, he enjoys this work and it is 100% voluntary and he's been doing it for, back to the 80s. And I very much appreciate your time, Bill, and thank you for sharing with us.
Thank you. Data geek. Thank you.
I would take this opportunity also, Ray Mann is here. Ray Mann is our district data gentleman and he also has been working with me and Bill, not only on this but on many other components of our work. So thank you, Ray, also. And that takes us to item six on our agenda, board member vacancy. And I don't know who's in a position to update us on that, David or Elizabeth?
Yeah, well, let me just start at this point, as everyone now knows.
I guess.
Mr. Cassidy is departing.
If they didn't know, they know.
And we're all sad as well and also celebrating your great service. That said, Mr. Cassidy's term is not yet complete and so the remaining balance of that is the eight months or so up until March. And so the board has gone out with a process by which to solicit individuals who would be interested. This is the evening that the board has decided to perhaps ask a few questions to the candidate. No decision will be made tonight, we'll be making that at a future open session meeting. But the remaining amount of time we have here is really for the board to ask some questions to the candidate and the candidate currently is with us and his name is Dan Fleming. And so I would welcome board members to open up for a conversation. And Dan would ask you to sit up in the front row.
Dan, let's begin by thanking you for putting your name forward. I really appreciate it. I meant what I said before about it being hard work but as a result satisfying work.
We didn't scare me off.
What are you going to scare me off?
I already tried, you know.
Let's do a couple of others.
Yeah, I do appreciate, we do appreciate your putting your name forward. And we've all had a chance to look at your statement. And if there are questions, now would be a good time.
Dan, I wanted to, first of all, thank you for the packet you put together. It was really thorough and your background is exceptional. One of the questions I wanted to ask, and I thought might be beneficial for the audience, is we've got three bargaining contracts that are in negotiations right now. And I just wanted to get a comment from you on your experience or your perspective on collective bargaining.
Well, let me first say, let me first, before we get into that, let me just thank you for the opportunity to declare my interest in this. And to your question, Elizabeth, I've always worked in private companies, and none of them were unionized. So I've never worked in an environment that had any unions directly involved. Certainly worked with suppliers who were unionized and that sort of thing. I know relatively little about what's actually going on with the discussions. I know the issues that have taken place in the past that made it to the public. But I have no ideas of what the issues are, except that there are some overriding issues that I think may bear on this. And that is that we have a limited ability to fund things in the state and in this community. And we have some underlying costs that are rising at a pretty high rate. And I think that one of the struggles is to try to find some way to get these in balance while preserving a great education for our kids. So I think it's a major challenge. But I honestly have very little inside information and I have no history in terms of union negotiations, okay?
Thank you.
Other questions?
Dan, you sent us your top three priorities. And I just wonder if you could summarize those briefly for the audience.
Can I add the fourth one that I put in there?
Oh, you had a fourth, yeah, there was a fourth. Yeah, you can say that one too.
So you asked what the top three were. At the top of the list, I put assuring the continued support of the community and the district's pursuit of excellence in education. I think we have a long history in this city of providing a superior education. I think it's one of the strong reasons why people do choose to locate in South Burlington despite some economic considerations that might choose you to have you elsewhere. Heard Bill talk about people from Burlington no longer coming to South Burlington, they're going to an outer ring of some sort. He didn't say where, but some other place. Apparently not south. Okay? So I think number one is continuing it, but doing that in a way in which it maintains strong support from the community, broad support from the community. And I say that with understanding that the demographics of the community are changing a lot. I think Rich Cassidy mentioned earlier that while the city population grows, the school population doesn't grow. So there are some pressures that are going on that I think are going to continually challenge the balance point. I put number two as being assuring the safety of students and staff. I don't think you can ever put that low on your priority list, safety and welfare of your students, your staff, the people that work with you and so on. And I am certainly well aware that there is an urgent issue, current issue with the methadone clinic that's there that needs to come to some resolution and is going to take some attention on the board. So I understand that if I were to be asked to join this group, that that would be a significant time consumer and a significant challenge. I've been at many of the board meetings over the last five years. I have watched the policy, the policy governance management system become, well, it came sort of as it was being deployed and being managed. I think it's the right way to go. I think the expertise of the board is never going to be one of being primary educators. They need a professional staff to do that. Administrative tasks are too big in a place like this to do it. There's going to need to be an administrative staff. So there needs to be a way of getting those people focused on getting the results that want to get done. And I know, I've never seen a better approach than the governance approach. It needs work. It needs to be continued on. It's a struggle. It's, you know, there's, a lot of time gets spent on it. I think hopefully, one of the goals of the board would be to reduce the amount of time that actually gets put into dealing with the nuances of the governance policy. So I think it's important, but I think it's, you know, it needs, it needs, I think it's the right way to go, but I think it needs some continued effort. And then I couldn't resist, because this has been one of my favorite themes in chatting with you, adding a fourth one, because I just couldn't make it be one of the top three. And that is that I think the whole situation begs for a long-term look. And I, you know, Bill's, Bill Smith's outlook out 20 years is just a great thing to have, to kind of digest and try to figure, okay, what are you going to do with it? It's certainly a lot better than not knowing what's going to happen in a year or two. And I really feel strongly that the board has to drive putting that perspective on what's going on and connect it with the city. And I think that we have a mechanism that's underutilized here between us and the city, and that is the steering committee. I think it provides an excellent forum for joining those things together. I'd like to see it become, to me, if you're going to steer, you have to look out and forward, okay? You can't steer by looking in the rearview mirror. You've got to steer by looking forward. So I'd like to see us move in that direction. So, sorry for the long answer.
Dan, I wondered if you could talk about what your thoughts are about the district's ends policy? Any comments about the ends that have been developed?
It's part of the governance, part of the governance thing that's going on. It's kind of the overriding thing. I think it's important to have those kinds of statements up there. I think the challenge that's being faced right now is to enter into a dialogue between the people that have to implement these things, the detailed things, and a high-level direction where things are going to go. It's kind of like, in a way, it's, if you have a constitution, how do you interpret that constitution in specific instances, okay? You don't necessarily want to change the constitution. You want to have it understood by the other people. And with due cause, make adjustments. So I think it's, Diane, I think it's the right thing. I just think it's another one of those things. One of the things I said was needing some work in there, and this is one of them. There needs to be a common understanding between those people that have to implement the challenge and those people that set the challenge.
Anything else?
By the way, not necessarily common words, common understanding, okay?
Well, all right. Well, Dan, we don't have a plethora of candidates, but we have a quality candidate.
Well, thank you.
And that is, that's really very nice from my perspective and I think from my colleague's perspective as well. So we really do appreciate you putting your name forward. I think this board will make a final decision very soon because come June 30, I won't be here. And the board shouldn't be-
And I know you want to be part of the decision.
And the board should really, you know, should really be full soon.
Well, thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you very much.
I hope I was able to answer your questions.
Thank you.
Great. That takes us to the update on the Howard Center's permit to open the methadone clinic.
Yes, let me just briefly give you an update. As you know, the process is continuing. Our appeal still remains active. I think that's important for people to hear. Currently, we know that they are continuing to move ahead with the methadone clinic construction, making modifications as they need. We have heard that there's an expected opening timeframe somewhere in the June to mid-August timeframe. We're not exactly sure when that is. And so there are those things in play. What I will tell you, as directed essentially by the board, is that I am working on coming up with what I'm going to say contingency plans as we get closer to, again, we're just ending a school year, but as we get closer to the opening of a new school year. So what am I going to do, given our concerns for student and student safety? What are some of my plans going to be? I'll be sharing that with you. But I think it's important for the public to know that, you know, that's part of the due diligence that I need to be doing on your behalf. So that's all I have around the methadone clinic.
Okay. Anything else? Great. That takes us to the superintendent's report and the city manager's search process.
Yes, just a quick update. I don't know the timeline, but my understanding, folks that are in charge of that, Lisa Ventress did call me and asked if I would be interested in participating on the city manager's search process. I said absolutely, that I'd be interested in that process and basically, you know, shared that it's an integral component to the existence of the school district and said yes. So I just wanted to let you, the board, know that that's currently in play. I don't really know many of the details, timeline, et cetera. And then really, just the last part is the end of the school year. And obviously, school board members were all over the place, celebrating a good number of the activities that went on, from awards nights and concerts and productions and graduations and celebrations. And, you know, I just want to say, you know, when we get a chance to see those things happen, and I'm so happy that board members were there. As you know, I posted up you signing the diplomas for the high school, the end result. And I know some of you maybe don't like the quality of my picture that I took, but I think it's really important and telling. As you know, this year, for the first year, we aired live, thanks to RATN, we aired live to all of our schools. And our students were out of session. We were in in-service at the elementary. And I know that those, that that time was productive. I did ask that all staff have the opportunity actually watch the ceremony of graduation. And I've gotten some, you know, feedback that that was very, you know, very helpful. I'll continue to solicit feedback. My purpose of that is that, again, at the elementary level, you know, we have six years of our children and then three at the middle and then four at the high school. And I wanted to make sure that, you know, our elementary teachers and staff understand how important their role is in that final end. And so again, I can't say enough things. I've left off a lot. I've gone to end-of-the-year retirement situations where we've, you know, said goodbye to staff. Again, some board members were there as well. Very emotional, but very proud, you know, moments. So I just wanted to let people know that. And thank you for your time to that effort as well.
If there are no questions on the superintendent's report, that takes us to the Act 150, Act 129 discussion.
Yes. And so I do want to emphasize that this is a discussion for folks, for the board tonight. You haven't had a lot of, you've definitely heard about this, but I think it's important for you to know, you know, kind of some history here. And I'm going to read just a little bit of some of the history and then certainly open it up for some questions. I think it's safe to say, we also have folks that are in the audience that are interested in where we are or where we're going. And, you know, I'm very respectful to that. And our district, our school, our high school is the desirable place to be. We know that. So again, for those of you who don't know, again, we often use acronyms that are confusing. And we use Acts, you know, Act 129 and Act 150, and that's confusing. So let me just start out. Back in 2002, we created what we called choice regions. And that was between Essex, CDU, Burlington and South Burlington. And we accepted a good number of students from these other locations. We also sent out students to others. Currently, in the more recent trend, we've had 38 students coming into us and 10 going out. And so important to note that in this agreement, money followed the students. In 2012, a change happened in the legislature. And basically, the change was that now money would not follow the student anymore. There would be open choice options for students. There would be cap limits in and out. You're familiar with that because we set that. But that happened in 2012. That revenue was important revenue for us to continue our programs in our district, obviously. And as most of you know, most recently, our budget was passed and supported by our community, but it also had a fair amount of reductions in it as well. So at the last board meeting in June 5th, the school board directed me to look at and come up with some next steps. And so given the current status under the transition, this transition from the 150, the way we had it initially, to the new legislative change, Act 129, we, obviously, we set a cap that basically restricted additional students coming in. And so we had a cap count of one additional student beyond what we had. I remain and have shared with you, the board, that I remain committed that financial resources do need to follow students. However, I'm sensitive about changing student enrollment assumptions for families, especially when no prior notice was given to those non-resident parent and guardians. Previous to the new act coming into play, the district has provided very consistent enrollment expectations for these communities. These opportunities have definitely been available to them for more than 10 years. My recommendation currently under the choice, again, this is for discussion purposes only, my recommendation, again, looking at the liabilities of the current situation. We have individuals that are on a waiting list. We have individuals that desire to have their other child join their older child that's currently here. My recommendation is that siblings of non-resident students currently enrolled in South Burlington be allowed to do that. Currently, our liability to that area is one.
Is that one for next year?
That's one for next year. And then our outward liability, as you know, is going to diminish with we have more and more students graduate and less, obviously, we're going to have to readjust that cap count. But the sibling component would drop off. And we know that the sibling, we've taken a look at that liability. We have a little bit more work to do. But again, I'm looking at not just the short term, but the long-term liability that the district would have with increased numbers of students.
So Dan, do you have a number for that, David?
We actually, we're working to refine that. I've asked Winn to help me with some of this detail. I don't think we have that yet totally compiled.
Meaning the other siblings for years two, three and four?
Right. But we know that the number goes down from 20-
Seven.
We have 27 in capture in year one. It goes down to 17?
Nineteen.
Nineteen, continue?
Goes down to seven, three years out, it goes down to zero, four years out.
So part of my worry has been, is what, again, has been the capture, the liability moving forward around this particular situation. I'm sensitive to siblings. I'm sensitive the entire process. I'm sensitive to siblings because the decisions were made prior to them having knowledge that this might end. And they have a student here and then they have a student here. That was not, and I want to be sensitive to that. Again, these are just some recommendations. I expect you'll have additional questions. The other part of this is we had individuals that were currently in South Burlington, pre-Act 129, pre-decision of Act 129, for students that were in South Burlington, but then had made a decision to move out of South Burlington for a variety of reasons, had gained approval from one of our other collaborative, in this case, CDU, that there would be options for them to come here with no real concern. They made the decision to move. So that would be my other, kind of what I'm calling the pre-Act 129 commitment. And that would be one student currently that's in the capture.
Can you explain that again?
Can you say that again?
Yep. So family lives here in South Burlington. Child going to South Burlington already, is interested in moving out of South Burlington. And one of the major components is whether or not they would be afforded the opportunity, high probability of having choice reciprocity back to South Burlington so their child could remain here for the remainder of their years.
If they're a South Burlington resident, why is that a issue?
Nope, they're a South Burlington resident, looking at moving. Their decision about moving was contingent upon whether or not when they move, they're going to be able to continue here.
Got it.
And they were given assurances, I don't think anyone can say 100% assurances, but based on the pre-Act 129 discussions, we don't see that that's going to be a problem, that your request would be granted.
So the student isn't moving to CDU, the family's moving out of the district.
And the family, the student and family would like to remain here at South Burlington. And again, this is pre-Act 129. They made a decision around residency based on the pre-Act 129 understanding. Again, trying to be sensitive to a student. So that is what I'm going to call our, I know this is confusing and I'm going to get a lot of questions. That is what I would say in capturing Act 129, Act 150. Those are previous, the way we did business, and then the resulting change is a result of the legislature change. In addition, as you know, at the high school, we have a, well, I'm going to, we have the big picture program. And the big picture program is in its third year, has continued to gain popular, you know, affirmation from many. And we, initially, when we set cap count, we set it for the whole, essentially, the whole school. We recognize that the big picture has its own capacity, has its own kind of- We recognize that the big picture has its own capacity, has its own kinda separate staff and its own capacity. And so, what is that capacity? We've tried to tease that out a little bit and also have asked the agency whether or not we could have a separate cap. Again, no, and in this premise, no money necessarily following the student. Could we have a separate cap count? And the answer from them is yes, you could. You could have a separate cap count from what's currently in place for big picture, 'cause of its s- specific program. So, um, again, my recommendation, again, up for conversation. As a result of the, uh, agency allowing us to consider big picture within its own separate, I'm gonna say, school, we could set a cap. We would set a cap, again, currently at thirty. We wanna certainly ensure that all South Burlington resi- residents have the primary opportunity to enroll. I think that's very critical. Given right now that we have twenty-two students that have accepted into big picture, I would see that we could consider, for instance, four lottery slots to non-resident students and maintain four to be filled by South Burlington residents. And again, that number, I certainly could see changing. So, again, the, these are, these are some of my recommendations, given the complexity of where we are at and some sensitivity to current realities with families and decisions that were made post or pre-Act one twenty-nine. I really, I mean, there's been some thought around, discussion around, uh, revenue. Currently, we're in a situation where we do not accept tuition. That was a policy change that happened. That doesn't mean that we couldn't change that. And so, that we could be in a, uh, revenue, if, if it was approved by the sending board, uh, that that could be also a, an option. Again, I'm giving you a lot of information. Um, again, this is, this has been one of those things that I think has continued to unfold and I've been, and, and worked hard to try to look at the liabilities to the district because one decision in year one can have a significant effect in year two.
So, David, let, let me just address one subject that you raised and that's the tuition student issue. As I recall the policy that the board passed quite a few years ago now and Wynne, maybe you've been looking at it, I don't know.
Yeah.
But that, that policy only applied to, um, situations in which the sender was a private individual as opposed to ascending school.
That's correct.
So, presumably, if we changed that policy, all that would, would allow would be a parent presumably to pay a, a tuition that we would set. Uh, it wouldn't really affect our relationship vis a vis the other choice, our, our choice agreement with the other schools. Is that, that where we're at?
I, I think that's safe to say. I mean, it certainly, currently, under, under the law, uh, a community member, parent can request of a school board under, I think, eight twenty-two C of the law, I believe, right? Uh, that request. But currently in play, that, that has not been, as it would be with you, likely not to be a viable option, under the current scenario that we're, that we're in.
That is, they could request their school board to pay a tuition rate that we could set or to pay the same rate that we set for, for example, students who attend, uh, under, um, programs for districts that don't have a high school. Would that be the rate they would pay?
Again, we have, we have different rates currently. We had different rates currently under Act one fifty and that's remember Ben grandfathered. We had different, different rates for Essex as we did for CDU and, and for Burlington. Not drastically different, but different. So, we could, there are, there is some flexibility there. But again, I think that it always gives the, the sending board the option of yes or no and, and in the situation of financial stewardship, given the current laws that are in place, it's, it's, it's obviously, you can predict the, the answers, most likely. So, again, I'm trying to cut the reasonable balance as I remain steadfast around, I do believe resources need to follow students or ADM need to follow students. I think this is, again, a fundamental flaw. And at the same time, I recognize there were some things that were done for individuals and families that I think is disadvantageous, uh, to the process. And I wanna be clear, we have many individuals on that waiting list. And, you know, I'm sensitive to their, their desire to come here. And so, um, again.
So, I, I just wanna add one other point from, from a background perspective. And that is to say that when the legislature decided to change the school choice law in a way that eliminated the idea that some money, really the state ADM money, would follow ascending student, really, this district was the only district that was adversely affected by that decision because we're the only district in the state that had a significant number of choice students over and above the number of students that we send out. So, the effect on us is the loss of about three hundred thousand dollars in revenue, which is, which is, uh, means a lot of money in this district because it's the equivalent of four faculty positions at a, at an average rate. That's a big problem for us.
Yeah, I, again, I, I think, uh, safe to say, accurate. We've, we've educated over a ten-year period, a hundred and forty students at the high school under this agreement. And although this same option has existed for other Vermont communities, it's not been exercised anywhere near the same level at all. Now, that said, we, through our agreement, you know, I wanna say that it's been a successful share between Essex and CDU and Burlington and South Burlington. I, I can't recite their exact numbers, but I think, you know, there's been an ebb and flow over the years. I do think we've had probably the higher percentage over this period. But that said, it's been successful for us in Chittenden County. And it's not been, um, and again, part of our, our advocacy, um, with the commissioner, um, at least what we've shared with him has been, we're kinda sad that maybe our, this model wasn't looked at a little bit more closely. How, why has it worked for us? Why couldn't it have worked in a, in a different capacity for, for some of the others? Even a, a different revenue stream or a different amount of revenue stream to ensure that resources in some way follow students.
David, I, I just have a question and maybe this sounds really simplistic, but can the sending schools, um, if they choose, release the, the ADM money to the receiving school or they, or the law says they cannot do that?
Cannot do that.
It has to stay.
Currently, there's no provision in, in, in their, their ability right now to do that. Again, that's part of some of the conversations that have happened around the legislative discussion. And as you know, John Everett was instrumental, you know, on trying to bring that up and, and get some changes to that. As he, again, I think continues to feel that that is one of the, probably the only ways that it's gonna work, where ADM is allowed and certainly caps can be still set, but ADM follows the student as opposed to exchanging of money.
And I, I just have to speak up on the policy point from that perspective. Because, you know, we, we live in Chittenden County. We are close to a situation in which we could have used school choice to go to our neighboring school districts and say, "Look, you specialize in this area. We'll specialize in that area. We won't try to offer everything. You won't try to offer everything, but we'll have the whole resources of the county available for our high school kids." And the effect of this legislative policy is really to kind of shut that door because school districts like this just can't afford to bear, uh, the, the expense of educating, uh, you know, with the, the one more student, the marginal cost is virtually, no, nil. But when you get to thirty students, you know, you begin to talk about a, at least a outright faculty position and more than that, because they don't fit in one classroom. We just can't do that.
And again, this circles right back to what, you know, Bill was just talking about. And again, you know, I can't recite all of the, the growth projections in all of the towns, but we definitely know in, in a lot of the outliers around Chittenden County, they're seeing a de- decrease in enrollment. And certainly, you know, when you hear about CDU, you know, when enrollments go down, that's, that's where revenue is. It's, it's going to become more and more challenging to continue to offer what I'm gonna say, you know, appropriate programming to meet those children's need, the children's needs. So, it's definitely, I mean, we're, the good news is we, we believe we're fairly stable, but yet we have our own challenges, uh, as you know, around, around keeping that balance. I know we have several folks in the audience that maybe are interested in.
Who probably wanna have their say about this and if there's, if there are, we, we, we're, we're glad to hear what you have to say. Okay, yeah, please, please.
My name's, uh, Dave Arms. My daughter, Aggie, is, um, sorta caught in the twist and in between, uh, this school choice legislation. She started at South Burlington. She's an existing South Burlington student. She had her freshman year at South Burlington High School. I talked to Dave about it and, um, I talked to Principal Burke about it. Basically, uh, we moved to Shelburne and we had an opportunity to, um, move sooner, you know, than we did. We had a certificate of occupancy to move sooner, but we thought that everything was all set up under the old school choice system. We had already been approved by the principal of CDU to, you know, waive Aggie in to, uh, South Burlington. Everything was fine. The legislation passed and it was like a sheet came down, of course. Now, we have a situation where we're toying an existing South Burlington student that she can't return. It's a difficult situation for her. I don't, I understand. There's many, many towns that's caught in a tough situation. I think my daughter's situation is kind of unique in that she's an existing student that's now being required to leave.
So, that feels very harsh. I appreciate your sharing that information with us.
Can I ask a question on that? I was under the impression that anyone, um, who was in the, in the high school at this point in time was grandfathered.
Well, this is a little bit different because.
The change in residency?
Change, it, it was ours. I mean, so, uh, his daughter was, you know, a South Burlington student. And there's no one who's gonna pick, currently, no one picking her up is a, under the grandfather of our previous agreement under Act one fifty.
She was never a student here under school choice. She was a student here because you and your wife were residents here.
Does that answer your question, Elizabeth?
Well, but it does sound like in this particular case, and the nuances sorta helped me understand the overall issue.
Yeah.
My understanding is that there was an agreement pursued with what became the sending school, CDU, that would have grandfathered this particular individual.
Right.
Is that accurate or?
Yeah, it, it was. It happened to be at the time where the legislation was, you know, you know, being written. But no money had exchanged and she wasn't here under that agreement. So, it's, it was.
So, that's the difference.
That's the difference.
The thing that's too bad, and I gotta say, is that in May, when did the legislation pass? Did it pass like early May? In May, when the legislation passed, we identified that, hey, this might be an issue. So, uh, we had the ability and, and offered to move sooner. The house wasn't completed, but it, we had a certificate of occupancy. We would've moved sooner. Uh, we were told by CDU that it didn't matter. They would not do, uh, would not bring her in under, what's the term again, Dave?
Under school choice, you mean?
Yeah, there was a, there's an actual term, opt-in or opt-out or some, some, some sort of opting. And what, uh, what happened was she could've, and we offered to move a little sooner so she could be a CDU student that was placed at South Burlington and grandfathered in. But they refused in that one last month. And it's almost like they, or almost like the system just sort of let her slide.
Just terms of what, what year is your daughter at our school?
She's going to be a sophomore.
And is this the exception that you're recommending?
That is, that is one of the exceptions that is currently in there. It is, again, a recommendation for consideration.
I'm still not getting the answer to my question, David, about how many siblings there are after these two exceptions.
We don't know exactly. We believe, um, we, we, we believe we have, we have a general, again, the current, we have students currently in the program. And then, they come to us from different places. We're using the waiting list, right? The right way to do it. People who've said they wanna come here. So, who's on that waiting list and who are the, the siblings? We believe we have that. It's fairly, it's minimal, less than, I think, in year one, it's one. I don't think we have, I mean, right now, we, we have to confirm this 'cause, you know, I, I don't, just wanna do the crosswalk. It's likely we, we could miss a name, so I, I wanna be careful of that, but.
I'm gonna say three.
I think our liability, our total, uh.
And they're not all in the same year.
Yeah.
We've got eighth grade, eighth grade and seventh grade. So, we've got two that will come in next year and one that will come in the year after that.
So, again, part of, you know, my, in my thinking is, again, it's to, to look at total liability, liability to the district, you know, while, again, the other part is I don't know, you know, what the prognosis will be for future years on possible resolution. I'm certainly not, you know, making decisions.
Things changing on school choice.
Correct.
Well, and it sounds like, it sounds like some of the issue was the timing of the legislative change has put several families in both sending and receiving districts kind of in a bind. So, so, s- you know, some of our strategy here is also just giving ample time for people to plan accordingly. So, I mean, at the end of the day, it's not, not necessarily looking for a permanent solution, but some time to accommodate individual situations and, um, and to plan ahead.
That certainly wasn't done. I, I mean, uh, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna go into the, the design of one twenty-nine, but it wasn't, you know, transitioning and cap counts and all of the things that, you know, in communication, you know, I think, we're fairly short-sighted around the implications. And obviously, you know, we, we had our own, you know, discussion on that particular part around cap counts and, and what we would include or not include.
The, the other piece of information I think is important here is that the other, the other districts have agreed to pay for the students that are the diminishing number, not for the.
Ones coming.
For the exceptions. So, those other districts are paying for twenty-seven students next year, for nineteen the year after, seven and then zero.
And does that include any big picture kids?
Students that we have under the choice agreement into big picture, uh, I do think there's, there's six of those students, so yes. So, they're, they're, they were part of that, that, that grandfathered number, yeah.
And the Commissioner of Education has basically said that that is an acceptable exception or interpretation of the statute? To allow the districts to, to sort of transition out of the old situation?
Again, the, as you, as you know, I communicated to, to you on that and I communicated to my colleagues, uh, at CDU, Burlington and Essex. And again, this is not easy work for us. It's, you know, this is revenue and, and.
They're not easy either to lose the revenue.
Right, but I, you know, my, on your behalf, I feel strongly that resources need to follow. Resources that were previously committed for these students inbound as well as those that we have going outbound. And so, we remain committed to pay for those students and they have remained committed to pay for the students that are currently in either until they graduate or, and, you know, in the event that they, they depart. It's where we're currently at.
So, a- as far as with respect to the, uh, big picture, I, what's the effect on, on, on that program of having those four additional students or not? I mean, is it a richer program for having twenty-eight or thirty kids in the program than twenty-two? Is it, is it less rich for the twenty-two kids because they're getting less attention? You know, what's the, the programmatic impact?
Well, again, we, we do have Jason here, but let, let me, Jaser Kushner is actually big picture. I didn't know that Jason was gonna be here, but I'm happy that he is. I mean, from my perspective, I mean, I think that there's, the, the fact of the matter that when we look at capacity limit, you know, we made a significant, uh, we made a change in our budget. We made some reductions last, last year. And I, I have a fundamental issue around simply just accepting additional students into our program when we had to be challenged with certain specific programs that were either AP or foreign language. However, with big picture, we have a staff currently established. We have space. Now, obviously, you know, that can change in some cases based on, uh, the need of a student. But generally, we do wanna have, we believe strongly in the program. We believe strongly that it has a positive effect for kids. So, it would be wrong for us not to say that there's, there's some opportunities in big picture that are specific. in big picture that are specific to the staff ratio. And so specific to the 22 number and kind of my thinking around four and reserving four for us really is my thinking. And I haven't really had an in-depth conversation with Jason, but talk a little bit on the 22.
So we're really set up for, for about 30 people. And that's, we had 29 students this year and it was a great number and we feel like that's where staff for next year. And so I feel like putting us at 22 is, is low for us. And so I, I definitely feel like bringing those students would add to the program. And I, I really feel like a lot of the school choice students we've brought in in the past have been really amazing contributors. And, I mean, I have a list here. I know who they are, who's on school choice, and I think they're students who would bring them on the program. So I think, and I feel like having those, you know, a lot of, part of what we're about is cross cultural understanding, getting people knowing different populations and having people from other districts in the past has helped, so.
I guess one concern though is that this, maybe in the first year with these four additional students, what happens next year if, if with just South Burlington non-school choice students, we, there's 34 kids who wanna be in the program and now we're stuck not being able to, 'cause we're not gonna cut them after, you know, if we bring in four right now-
Right.
We're not gonna say, you know, you're there for the four years.
Right, I, I agree and I think it's definitely a short-term solution. And I don't know that we have, we don't have a long-term solution. One of the things we're pursuing with the Agency of Education is, so originally we started big picture, we looked at starting under tech center status and there's a couple of hurdles with that. One, there's specific legislation of what you need to be a tech center that we don't quite fit because just the way we operate and that's, that legislation is older. And also to be approved as a tech center, you have to be approved by a certain board that's made of the tech centers and sometimes they're reticent to approve new competition.
Jason, the, the key component with, with tech center status, as you know, where students go to tech centers, money currently follows them.
Right.
So you, you must kind of do a little bit of comparison in this reality is that we currently have students that wanna go to other high schools. Our agreement, we then allow that. Under tech center status, you know, money follows our students. And so it's, it's kind of contradictory to current practice.
But, but the idea, as I understand that, is, is to try to have big picture as, as a separate entity where the money would follow, just like with tech centers. I, what is the status of getting a legislator to push that?
So the Agency of Education, which is not a legislator, is in favor of that, that they have these transformed school legislation that they're really pushing. Right now, we do not have a legislator who, I think Pat Berg is talking to in the South Burlington who wants to put that forward. And so, and Dave, correct me if I'm wrong. So I feel like our best strat, we have, our current strategies now are, one, work with the Agency of Education to create that kind of pathway. Or two, you know, as, you know, there are, isn't the space for all of the Champaign County high schools to create their own boutique schools, whatever that may be. And so setting up maybe agreements that, that, you know, they all can have a big picture school and an engineering academy and arts academy like Essex has, but create an agreement that students who wanna go to these kind of smaller schools, those schools or boutique academies, there could be some sort of school choice within those. And so that, that's kind of the avenues we're thinking of right now.
So Jason, if you actually just put your hand out a little farther, you'd see you'd put your hand on Ellen Head was one of our legislation. We're happy to have you here, by the way. Maybe you're sorry, maybe you're sorry that you hear Ellen. We're glad you came to the Agency.
Thank you for being here.
But, but if this is a, a partial solution to 129, I don't know, you know, it's not the full picture, the full solution, but is this not something that the board should be involved in, in pushing with the legislature? I mean, you know, first of all, we have to think if it's right to be pushed or not, but it seemed to be.
I, I will say to you, Martin, that, you know, if you sit here long enough, you see things kind of flip around. I can remember early days on this board when we were looking at the revenue stream going out to the tech center and saying, this is crazy. You know, we shouldn't be losing this revenue just because these kids are going to the right educational place. And that's how it feels if you're on the other side of it. That's how it feels to some of these other districts. I don't really know what the solution is. I do see, you know, from my present perspective, I do look at the opportunity that seemed to be building in Champaign County. And the way in which superintendents, we're talking to superintendents. One time we had a meeting involving a lot of school board members and superintendents who were talking about this sort of thing about, you know, in an, in an environment of declining revenue, was there not an opportunity to be more collaborative and more cooperative and to expand, for example, the range of AP choices for, for kids? And that sort of thing by coming up with some common scheduling and letting that money go with the kids. If you're in a weaker, if you feel like you're in a weaker district, you know, that's very frightening. Because if you lose your kids, you know, there comes a certain point in time when, you know, one too many students goes and you say, well, we just lost this. We just lost another teacher and we have to lay somebody off.
Sure, I mean, that's the balance that has gone against us right now in the legislature. But, but my, my point is that if, if we think that it makes sense for at least the boutique school we have as far as the, the big picture, that, that we should push at least for that to have money following the kids, just like if it's the arts academy in Essex, is this something that, that the board should get in back, get back and push?
I mean, I, you know, I certainly would be in favor of that. I, I do think though that we have what I would say an imbalance, you know, and we have individuals that are currently on a waiting list that can't come, you know. It, it, I mean, I wanna advocate absolutely big picture. I'd like to advocate for all kids and I think, as you said, Rich, we want opportunities to be available for students. And there, there has to be some reasonable transition that allows for, as you said, the small schools, when shrinking enrollments are happening, to make the noted change, but to keep opportunities for kids. So there's gotta be a combination and I'm certainly happy to pursue big picture, but I also, again, my organization, the Superintendent's Association has definitely put this as a, as a front runner. I, I know it's a very politically charged issue for the reasons that you said, Rich, around small schools and/or schools preserving that revenue to maintain their schools, but has to be, has to be talked about.
So David, in this recommendation, are you proposing, would the additional four students in big picture come off this waiting list of 21?
Right, we would, we would look at the, that, that's right. There are some students on there. We would go through the waiting list and see if they're interested in big picture. There are some that have declared that. So they would come off the, the waiting list.
But, but there's no guarantee of the ADM follow, or the money following resources?
That's correct.
And we're very clear of our own student enrollment in big picture for next year. We're not gonna pick up more of those, more kids from our own community?
I mean, I have the numbers right here. So right now, our current confirmed is 22. As far as South Burlington students who might come to big picture, there is, let's see here, one, two, three. So there's three possible South Burlington students who are, either they've been accepted or they're in the application process. So they might get accepted, they would still have a spot. So wouldn't taking on four students, outside students from the big picture would have no effect on those three students? And then, and there's-
Again, I, and Jason and I haven't really gone in-depth on the numbers. I was really just thinking around the reasonable balance of, of four coming out. And that number could be reduced a little to three and having, you know, five slots available for individuals within, within South Burlington. But, or even a smaller number. But again, I'm, I'm wanting to be mindful of the capacity of big picture in concert with, you know, the current situation inside here.
So I know there's not an additional faculty cost for extending this program, but what, is there an incremental cost for students for that?
Sure, absolutely. Again, I would be wrong, I would be wrong to tell you that every student, I mean, as, as I have been really significantly consistent around resources following students, that is, that is very true. Every child will take a little bit of our staff time. Currently though, the big picture was staffed in a way to support that capacity. That said, sometimes a student, you know, is gonna get it right off and it's gonna be, be a lot less time maybe in interactions and sometimes a little bit more. But again, I think that, that ebb and flow works out to be very, there is a, you know, there's a fairly significant application process that they have to go through and a lot's involved in that. So it's not just, I wanna go and, and they're in.
But, but there are other costs. I mean, they're, they're gonna get a laptop, correct? I mean, won't these four students get laptops? There'll be supplies that they, they have.
Yes.
You know, so, so they're-
I guess my question is, have you delineated what those costs are?
Right, we, I have not broken down, you know, right down to the per student amount. And again, currently big picture has a budget and the budget is set at kind of the 30 number. So again, that certainly would be, you know, be revenues, revenues saved. But again, I'm trying to be mindful at the same time of balance between resources and what I believe is our, a, a good number for our programs in existence and some sensitivity.
So I'll just note for the board, this is not an action-
No, it's not.
Tonight, I think it might make sense for us to calculate, to the extent it's calculable, what the variable costs associated with a new student in the ordinary program and in big picture would be, because that's a responsible number to look at.
But I also still, I'd wanna understand from Jason that, that the intangible cost of having a 22 versus a 28 person program, because having a certain number of kids in the program could benefit everybody in the program. So that, I think that we have to keep looking at that as well, not just the hard costs.
Do students ever switch during the year? Is it always a beginning, you start in September program? Or do, might students come in January?
Good question. So we originally have not accepted students except for the beginning of school year. I think twice in the history of the school, so we just completed our fourth year, twice in the history of the school, we've had students, they were both SB students who transitioned into the, into the mainstream high school. And we've had many requests come in partially through the year, partially, part way through the year and we, we said, no, we do a lot of community work upfront, a lot of framing. It's just, it'd be awkward, so we've not had major transition.
Thank you.
I believe you wanna make a comment or ask a question?
I was just gonna say, so I'm in kind of an odd position because I, I work in big picture and my daughter is applying to be in what is a newer part of big picture, which is the exceptional senior year. The exceptional senior year is something we started last year and that encourages students to come in and experience one year in big picture for a couple of reasons, to figure out a true career path, a true passion before going on to college. And they also do some amazing senior thesis projects, service work, serve the community. And the, that addition to the program has increased the richness of the program, increased, raised the bar for everyone in the program, set great models for, you know, the current students we've had, but also I think the students who came in learned so much more about learning and themselves. So that's, that, I think that is an example of when having some more students and the right students as part of our community has been really important. And I think, I'm a little biased, but I think that it's a great fit for my daughter and I really want that opportunity for her and for our community to have the benefit of her presence there. So we're kind of waiting to see how this might evolve.
So, so would a choice student, and she, you're not a choice student. She's not coming from another school district.
She would be, we live in Essex.
Oh, okay, so, so that, that could apply a situation where somebody could come from another school district for just that senior year?
Potentially, yeah.
Okay.
And I don't know what breakdown of, what grades are, are current choice districts?
I guess the, the other question that just kinda came up from what Jason was saying as far as, if we bring in somebody who is a choice student freshman year and then they wanna opt out after freshman year, does that mean they're not welcome to the stay at SBHS? Or they have to go back to the other district? Or how, how would we work that out? I mean, I'm, there's no answer for that right now.
I think, no, but, but it's, I think this is, this is, this would be, again, we're in discussion phase, this would be some careful articulation and agreement. I think that if, if we don't, you know, then if big picture's looking for, you know, and we're on the cap count as we move forward, hopefully legislation changes. But if there's 10 open slots and someone sees the access to come into big picture, be accepted and then, then wanna hop in to regular program, you know, we're gonna have to have some language specific to, to that. And again, Lynn and I talked a little bit about, about that. Again, we try to look at all of the liabilities, I don't know if we capture all of them.
Well, let me ask you a liability related question. If we should have a student who comes to our school through choice who is special education eligible from reimbursement perspective, that school district is, is, is the, regarded as the home district of that student? And are we gonna be outbid to get the reimbursement we ordinarily get? Because that could be, that could take you $300,000 over, $600,000 over.
I, I believe that the LAF broker, and I have to verify this, but the LAF broker would be responsible for the special education costs. So as far as receiving our revenue on the, on the resources for the, for the actual enrollment? No, the extraordinary, or special aid costs, I believe would be covered by the district. Again, I have to make sure that, that we're, that we're straight on that.
Strikes me to verify that.
That's significant.
Again, we, we wanna be clear here that, you know, students are brought in on the, on the, on the fit of the program and, you know, that, all students. All students, I wanna be clear about that.
Well, we certainly would not wanna be in a situation-
That's right.
We could not be in a situation where we're discriminating against students because of their special eligibility, we just wouldn't do that. So, so we need to be sure we know the answer to that question. Other comments?
Do we, do we have the board chair from Essex here?
Yes, did you want to, to comment?
Yes, thank you. Assistant Chairman.
Yes, nice to meet you.
Chairman Cassidy, thank you. My name is Jack Balandorf. I'm chairman of the U46 School Board for S, which includes Essex High School and the Center for Technology Essex. We had a school board meeting Monday evening where I learned that South Burlington would be discussing this issue and I was offered by my board to come and participate and listen to, listen to the discussion tonight because we are very, we are dealing with the same issues that you are. And in particular, the special relationship that South Burlington and Essex have had in the school choice has been beneficial, I think, to both our, our students and our communities. And understanding that what's happened as a result of Act 129 is that it hasn't affected on both of us. A, a couple of data points that I think this district should know that for Essex High School, our incapacity that we are bringing in for taking out our tuition students is we have set a capacity of 20 students to come in. What I hear in, from South Burlington is that it's one, one coming in who's not of, who doesn't have tuition. And like, is I saying that right?
You're correct.
So just to, to give you a perspective, we have 20 students who we, in, in Essex are choosing to fund, however, however that's gonna happen, we don't quite have all the registration numbers yet coming in for next year, but our in-board capacity is one. We also-
Can I, can I just clarify?
Yes.
One piece. So how many currently do you, under, like, we're sending you, CDU and Burlington? What's that, what's your number, Dave?
I don't have, I don't know.
And I mean, we're, we're at the 27.
Yes, yes.
I don't know.
I, I don't have that number and I don't even wanna, I could hazard a guess, but I, it would be, I would be, no matter what I said, it would be inaccurate. Some will say that. Like South Burlington, we take tuition students from many different districts that don't have schools, Westford, Grand Isle, Fairfax, et cetera, where we have students come in. And of course, with those students, the tuition only comes into us. We have, and, and I agree that having a dialogue of where we're gonna go and working with our legislators and trying to understand how this process can be sugared out is, is absolutely a great strategic direction. And I, I would offer U46 to partner with South Burlington to, to craft a, a path forward to, to make that happen. That said, that doesn't help our students who have to start school at the end of August of 2013, right? That's, that's two months from now and we have students that, that, we have, we have received petitions to our board about, we wanna attend one student from a big picture program, one parent who has siblings in here. What can we do to engage with South Burlington to make that happen? Our board has taken a position to hear what South Burlington's position's gonna be on these things, to see what we can engage. I know superintendent to superintendent discussions have occurred on this topic. I, I know that parents have, have been actively engaged in their districts to try and come to a, a mutual resolution on this topic. I'm just here to, to offer support and to South Burlington to let you know, this is something that's near and dear to our hearts. We would like to work this together as I think both our districts would agree. We would like to work this together, as I think both our districts would agree. We're here to, to do what's in the best interest of the students, recognizing that it's a, a, a financial burden, no matter which way we're gonna go on this. So, and I'd be willing to entertain any questions you may have of what we're doing in Essex on this topic. And if not, that's fine, I'll let other people talk. But, but I just wanted to introduce myself and let you know that we're struggling with these same things. And we want to work collaboratively here to make this a win-win for everyone.
Well, we appreciate that. I don't know, are there any questions for Jack?
Do you know what your waiting list is?
At four, we, we, we have no waiting list. In fact, because our capacity for incoming students, our board had set at twenty, I do know we had sixteen applicants. So right now, we have no one who's, who's waiting. Now, and, and I'm just, that's, that's a, an Essex High School discussion. Of course, as we've talked about here tonight with the Big Picture programs, we have similar schools within the schools too. Our Academy of Visual and Performing Arts and our Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math Academies. I don't know what, what the enrollments are for those particular academy models that are inside Essex, what the waiting list is for there.
How many, do you know how many students who are coming in are from South Burlington of the sixteen?
That I don't know. I, I know administration has that information. I, I, I don't know what that is as a board member. I, I do know, one, one data point is that our board has committed with respect to South Burlington, for those students who are currently in South, those Essex residents who are attending South Burlington High School, we, we, Essex, U forty-six will be funding South Burlington for those students to continue as, as long as they're students here and matriculate through graduation. So we, we, as a result of this change in legislation, we are not withdrawing our financial support for those, for those students to continue their education in South Burlington.
We're aware of that, and we certainly do appreciate it.
So, so.
And we're doing, and, and we're doing the same thing, although, again, those, those numbers into Burlington, Essex, and CDU are maybe different. But that's certainly an agreement.
Right, and our bilateral agreements is what I'm focusing on here. I, I, I don't know what's happening with, with other districts going on on that, so.
Okay, well, thank you again.
Okay.
Very good of you to come to our meeting.
Yes, thank you. It's interesting, I feel like a stranger in a strange land, but that's okay.
Any, anything else on this subject that we can, can be said or should be said tonight? Okay, well, we'll be on the agenda.
Rich, can I, yeah, you know, one of the things when you, we, I think David and Lynn, you've got some direction on kind of understanding the nuances and the, and the liability and the costs going forward.
Go ahead.
And, and I think there's, you know, as I was just looking at it kind of twofold. When you talked about Big Picture and then you talked about some of the exceptions that would come in over the course of the next, as this current group of twenty-seven students sort of phases out, the sibling opportunities and so forth. Just looking at it, I mean, you've got at least eight students, probably between eight and ten total. And if you look at a four-year commitment over that period, you know, you're basically talking about kind of thirty-two student years. And if you use, you know, kind of our, I just used the twelve thousand dollars a year rate. You know, that's an exposure of about three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars on top of the lost revenue of the three hundred thousand. So whatever, whatever that three hundred and eighty-five nets out to in terms of a, you know, let, let's just for ballpark, say it's fifty percent in terms of the, the aggregated cost. There's, there's really that net effect of, it ends up being a half a million to the district. So, you know, I may be thinking about that the wrong way, but I, that's the sensitivity I think it's important for us to get at when we're looking at understanding where the, you know, where the recommendations are. And, and balancing, you know, what, you know, I, I think are really legitimate, you know, family concerns. I know we've heard a couple stories, we've heard your story, we've heard some others in a previous week. And these are tough, tough situations that were brought on by legislation that probably didn't quite anticipate this, so.
Absolutely, I'll, I'll, I'll work to, to provide you more. Again, it was, it was on the agenda for discussion, and they certainly had it. I appreciate your feedback and, and folks that have also attended tonight. So let me come back to you. This will be back on the agenda. I think important for folks to know, we'll be back on the agenda for the July ninth board meeting. I'd be happy to have you in the audience, Mr. Cassidy, if you'd like to, like to be there.
Since I, since I won't be there.
Come on, Rich.
Since I won't be there, I will feel free to say something to the, to the parents who are here. And that is, you know, it, it's not a situation in which we're not aware of the hardship issues that this poses and fairness and equity considerations that, that, that you're feeling. I hope you understand that we also have fairness and equity issues in terms of the community that we're responsible to, to balance, or my colleagues will have. So, how they'll do that, I'm not sure, but I, I know they'll do a great job and balance it as best they can. Thank you.
Can I just add one thing to, to what Elizabeth was saying? I mean, that, that math gives you a rough idea of lost revenue perhaps as far as what we would be getting if we were getting the tuition. But I'd really want to understand the incremental or marginal costs that we're dealing with. The laptop cost, the supply cost, just an estimate of that. Because what I'm hearing for at least Big Picture, you know, because it's fairly well-defined, we know that the fixed costs aren't gonna go up because they're not, not gonna hire additional teachers if they keep under thirty. It's a lot harder for us to make that kind of determination for the school. Why, as you alluded to, you were in fact cutting some programs like AP stuff. So, I mean, I understand that, but, but I think having the idea of the incremental marginal cost will, will help us in the decision as well.
Yeah. Thank you for the feedback, thank you for the discussion. And I said that wrong, our, our meeting is July tenth, so if somebody's hearing that wrong, it's, it's July tenth. We have other meetings, the board has other meetings leading up to that, to that week, but not that one.
We're, we're gonna move on to our next agenda item. In, in a way, it's totally independent of this one, but in a way, it, it bears on this because it relates to the contingency, idea of a contingency teacher in the elementary schools.
Except you're skipping over my, my.
Oh, I forgot about your number ten.
If you want to.
It is connected. Can, can we go back? Because it, because these are, these are related.
Yeah, sure, sure, no, that's great, that's great. And these people will get the lead.
We do have recommendation with the administration on a contingency teacher. And it does, one of the things it shows is how delicately balanced some of these considerations are and how much money it can quickly cost. So, so let us go then, we'll go back to.
Thank you, Richard. So, again, this is for discussion purposes. The board has not had the opportunity to read or see any of this. I absolutely know you're, we're gonna have some added questions from me about this. As you know, the year has ended, registrations have happened, some have happened. There's still some more that will happen. And what I've highlighted for you is, is a chart below the, of kind of the current realities of where we are. Please note that volatility at the kindergarten level is still in flux. And so we typically see in almost every school, three or four more students that get added to, to these numbers between now and the start of the year. Not always, but I mean, it's a concern. So what I've done is I've highlighted in red what I'm calling, you know, concerned areas. At Chamberlain currently, we have thirty-eight students and so registered nineteen each. Obviously, the next concern for me is at grade three, which twenty-two and twenty-three for forty-five.
It's up to forty-seven now.
Thank you, Holly, I was saying, so forty-seven.
I'm not sure it's a thank you, Holly.
Yeah.
No, we'd rather have the info.
Yeah. And then at Central School, I'm highlighting an area of concern at grade two, and at Orchard, grade five. And so for discussion purposes, my thinking is as follows. I think, again, at, at this given time, it would be appropriate for me to, to request in the future some added resources, teacher resources to Chamberlain. Again, I don't know that this is not the perfect fix, but I think would be an appropriate response where we would go between a teacher would assist in grade K and grade three, given the current numbers. So, again, Holly's here, you can talk a little bit more about this. But essentially, class A, additional classroom teacher would be split between grades one and three. Schedules would have to be arranged where literacy and math, et cetera, would have to be shared to take students out of that particular grade for both K and three. Not ideal, but what I would say is significant, a significant help. At Rick Marcot and Orchard, I'm concerned at those two areas, at sixty-three and at fifty. My recommendation at this point would be that we wait until we near the beginning of the school year or prior to the beginning of the school year, and I may look to add some, request some added resources around what I'm gonna say, para educator support to assist classroom teachers in, in some of those areas. We typically don't get a lot of, although Holly's just kind of shot that a little bit. We don't get a lot of additional students into the upper grades, and, and that's kind of been evident by Bill Smith's presentation tonight. I want you to know, again, just our guidelines around our, our numbers for K three, our optimal ranges are in at sixteen, eighteen, and a maximum not to exceed is at twenty for K three. For fourth through fifth grade, the optimal is sixteen to twenty, not to exceed twenty-five. So as you can tell, I'm, I'm backing up to some, some numbers that are, you know, of concern. I think the other component of this, which I know there's some folks, Holly's here, you know, probably has, you know, can answer some questions specific to this, on her enrollment. But we also have some individuals currently, I believe here tonight, that are in, have had their children currently attending Chamberlain. And we do that because they're resident either in Central or Orchard, but they've requested a waiver to have their children go to Chamberlain. And so I have held up making a decision on the waivers because if it's going to significantly impact the population at Chamberlain with that, and, and not looking at resources, I think that, that would be disadvantageous. So I definitely have some folks in the audience that are, probably have wished that I had made a, a decision by now. And my communication to them, I, I'm gonna say has not been, has not been excellent. I've been working at trying to figure out what the next step is and not trying to make a misstep. They're here tonight, in, in many ways, probably wanting to advocate for a decision. It's, there's no decision yet made, obviously it's a discussion with you folks. But, so to be really clear, they live in the Central School area. They had been previously waived in through a waiver to have their child attend Chamberlain. And again.
Which, which grade?
Varyed grades.
I have two at first grade, two at second, one at third, and two at fourth. Three of those students would be Orchard students and four would be Central students.
Can you go through those numbers again, Holly?
Sure, I have two at first grade.
Yeah.
And I have two at second grade, one at third, and two at fourth.
So, you know, this, this plays right to, and again, what I did with the, with the three elementary principals, we looked at this. And we looked at the waiver decisions and what that would mean on the allocation of resources. And again, for me, if we, if I'm unable to add resources and I need to be mindful about who I waive, if that's going to add a significant, an increased number into that particular grade, so.
And none of these seven are in these numbers right now?
They're all in.
They're all in the numbers, okay, so what we're seeing is, okay.
Can I ask a question also?
Sure.
We heard earlier about a missed deadline for school choice, and I know you're looking at that again. I, how many people are in that situation who missed the deadline but have now sought to choose to have their kid go to Central or Orchard? Because that, because, I mean, that, that's one less kindergartner if, if you allow that for, for Chamberlain.
Absolutely right, so under AYP, we had, we had, you heard from an individual earlier that did not meet that deadline. That's an, that would be an AYP piece. And so I have also not ruled on that one because that also has implications. And I'm now drawing a blank. So that was a missed deadline.
But do you have many, is that the only one?
That's the only one that I currently know. All of the other situations are waiver requests that I have received. I think some are, many are in the audience here, some are in the audience, that did fill out the waiver and the request to, to remain, you know, at Chamberlain.
David, we had one other family who, who had sent you an email that has three students that were requesting to go to Central after the deadline. Both Sue and I responded, I haven't heard from that family since then.
Okay, so I, I'll have to.
Another family of three that, I'm not, I'm not sure where they're.
I might have it here. So.
But it doesn't, it doesn't impact kindergarten.
Yeah. So again, this is discussion, I'm, again, trying to look at, and I'm overusing the word, you know, liability to the district, but looking at the grades and, you know, I, I'm sensitive to also, there are some implications around staffing currently as well. Currently, assignments have been assigned, that's part of the contractual obligation, so duty assignments have been assigned. And currently, a Chamberlain employee has been moved to provide additional support for that kindergarten, the kindergarten over at Rick Marcot of sixty-one. So you see four classroom teachers there, there was a, an assignment change that went there of an, of a long, longtime employee, actually at, at Rick Mar, at Chamberlain. And so there's, there's those implications too. But I, I want to let you know that that was administratively a decision based on that, that, that number.
And one other question, when I, when I look at Orchard in the first grade, why, why are there four classes there of fifteen instead of three, you know, two of seventeen and one of sixteen, freeing up that teacher to go somewhere else?
Yeah, and part of that is, again, you know, decisions by the administrator, given the complexity of, of, of class makeup.
Of the core.
Exactly, exactly. And again, I couldn't give you more, but there, there's been many conversations around where, where that allocation and resource goes or would go. And again, as you, as you know, I mean, I, I made, we made reductions in, in our programs across the board this year. We made two reductions at Chamberlain, one at Marcot and one at Orchard. This represents back up at Rick Marcot, one still down at Orchard, and two actually out at, at Chamberlain. And currently, colleague, correct me if I'm wrong, your enrollment is actually just two below where you were last year.
May thirty-first of two thousand and twelve, we had two hundred and forty-one students. May thirty-first of two thousand and thirteen, we had two hundred and thirty-seven students. So if you look at it from year to year, we're only down four students. But we've lost three classroom teachers and a special educator.
So Holly's doing a good job of providing some level of advocacy for her school, which she should be proud to do. And I'm proud of her for that, but also, you know, I say. But I also, you know, again, the distribution of where kids are at and, you know, the budgetary issues that I was faced with, you know, those were some decisions that were made. So, again, this is discussion, I don't know if there's other questions that you folks have.
When, when will this be an action item?
Well, I'd like to, again, I, I do feel that there's some decisions that need to be made. I'll continue to refine some of this data again with, with the known changes that will happen between now and July tenth. But I do feel that, you know, I'm not saying this would be the exact request, but I, I need to bring something back to you. It's not fair for me to not have allocated resources accordingly. I would, at this point, unless there's significant changes, to me, I probably would not make a, a decision at Rick Marcot and Orchard unless I, you know, until we get closer to the beginning of the year.
And the contingency teacher was in the budget, but not the para educators, as I've called.
That's correct, the contingency was in the budget, and it was part of a conversation that we had during budget process. And it's not something, although generally when it's in the budget, it's at my purview, but this was added as a contingent teacher and that I would need to come back to you for this particular purpose. And, and John, I asked, I had kind of a little overview of our current. And, and John, I asked, I had kind of a little overview of our current.
I just want to clarify the contingency, there's, for this situation, there was one teacher added, but also, we always put in some funds for program changes or enrollment in kindergarten, so there's, there's, there would be, if a paraeducator was the way to go, there are funds for that.
And is, is there a scenario where you didn't put the waivers in, and it changed what the staffing requirements were?
It really, it really does not have a major effect.
Okay.
So, but I didn't feel it was right for me to honor the waiver until I have a little bit more information and decision from the board around allocated resources. So, you know, I'm just trying to be smart about that. I know that, again, I have people in the audience that have been very patient with me, and, and would like a decision, I think, a long time ago, but, you know, I'm trying to be, be mindful, and they've been very respectful too, I would say.
I see a hand.
I do. Hi, I am Heather Hill. I have a third grader at, or soon, soon be third grader at Chamberlain School, so one of the classrooms affected. I, I want to understand and make sure I, I heard you correctly, that the Orchard School in first grade has four classrooms?
Central.
Central.
Kindergarten.
Has four, and what is the number of students in that classroom?
Sixty-one.
Sixty-one. And so it's fifteen students per. I guess I'm trying to understand what your, the board or whomever's decision was on that as to, you said it was the makeup of the classes. I'm trying to understand how that is any different than putting twenty-two to twenty-three students in a classroom for a bunch of third graders that are also from experience unusual makeup as well, I guess, and needing that extra support. So I'm trying to understand what your justification is on that.
Sure, and really, again, that, that would be to me, so again, thanks for, thanks for being here and asking the question. You know, it's always a delicate balance. I think, you know, I certainly understand that class size is an important consideration. We do have guidelines, and, and classroom teachers who I, you know, look to, and principals, I know that the makeup from year to year can be very, can be very different, based on twenty students this year, twenty students next year. That said, you know, I do need to be mindful of what I'll say, early childhood kind of development. Definitely the kindergarten age where we know that our kids are coming into, we're very sensitive to making sure that those are healthy foundational beginnings. That's not to say that it's not important all the way through, but very critical, and again, our class size ranges certainly speak to that, and we want to try to keep those down there. Across the board, although not every grade, but generally across the board, we're definitely on the upper limits in some of these categories. My proposal, again, around currently in play is to help provide some relief to third grade at Chamberlain in the makeup of a teacher, not a full-time teacher dedicated to have their own classroom group of kids, but would be to work out a schedule where, again, not easy, I, I recognize that. But there's time where, again, I would work with Holly, Holly would work with teachers to figure out what would be, you know, the, the most appropriate. That said, you know, you know, the, the situation at Central School, you know, we'd be, it becomes that, that kind of magical number, three divided by never and four, and we also know, across the board right now, we know that we typically, as I said earlier, we get, our, our highest volatility over the summer is typically kindergarten. All right? And so, I mean, I'm, I'm telling the board, three to four in kindergarten across every school, and when that happens, I've got some real concerns at Chamberlain. And I would have now less concerns at, at Rick Marcot or Orchard, given our capacity. So I'm very concerned, early childhood, very concerned about that, that ratio. And again, that's part of where I'm at with the discussion tonight.
I don't recall what the kindergarten standard is, but I think it's an average of twenty?
Yeah, so again, your, your policy, you have a, a policy G six, and our, our minimum is in the fifteen range, our optimal average isn't, for K through three, is the sixteen through eighteen with a maximum of twenty. And again, these are guidelines. And so I, I, and again, they're, they're reasonable guidelines. Again, if, you know, we have some teachers in the audience, they definitely will tell you, there's some years with, you know, eighteen students in their classroom feels like fifteen, and some years there's fifteen that could feel a lot different.
The thing that's different about Chamberlain is we don't have general paraeducators to support in the classroom, but the other two schools do. So when you're talking about twenty kindergartners in a classroom, you're talking about twenty kindergartners with, with one classroom teacher, which is.
Talking about one busy teacher. Well, it's, okay.
Unless there's a student receiving special education services, there, there are no general ed, paraeducators at Chamberlain.
So this will be back in front of you all, four of you, not Mr. Cassidy, on July tenth, and, you know, I will have some additional information, and you'll have some stuff out ahead of time around where I'm thinking, but I appreciate the conversation.
Actually, one more person wants to be recognized?
Yeah, I am the mom of the waiver of third grade, and I would like to support the contingency teacher for Chamberlain. I've had my older daughter go through Chamberlain, her sister's now been there for three years. It's her family, and I understand numbers, but when you're talking about a little girl's well-being and her willingness to learn, and she's thriving there, she loves it, she loves the Chamberlain family, she loves the teachers, and I understand the numbers, but as a mom, I'm asking to reconsider her waiver, and I'm asking you to please put a contingency teacher at Chamberlain, so that she can continue where she feels safe and happy. And so it's, I apologize for the emotion, but it's a very long wait, and it's very nerve-wracking, and so I just would really like you to consider that contingency teacher, and also allow my daughter to finish her education at Chamberlain. They're all going to merge in middle school, I understand that, but telling an eight-year-old little girl that she can't go to the school where she spent her entire life watching her sister go is a very difficult situation, and my heart goes out to you with your high schooler in that situation. It's, it's a terrible feeling. And so I just ask you to please reconsider and really think about this contingency teacher for Chamberlain, where they are so needed, not only for my child, but for the entire third grade and the new kindergartners coming in, and I just think it's very important, and just want it to be heard.
Well, thank you. We appreciate your comments. Yeah. They will weigh on members' minds, I know.
So, again, I, I don't want to be misleading to the board that, that these are necessarily coupled or decoupled. I mean, I certainly can make some decisions on waivers. I, I just am concerned, in this particular situation, third grade is a concern, so, you know, that, that's, that's where I'm at, okay? And I don't want to make it, I don't want make, I don't want you to feel that I can't make a decision on the waivers, but I think you understand the complexity of the, of the enrollment issue.
David, I know these are fluid numbers, but when, when you're asking this to be an action item, will you put the numbers in the packet?
Uh, the actual.
For the, for the meeting on the tenth?
What do you mean, actual numbers?
Will you put the enrollment numbers? Will you send us the numbers?
Total enrollment, you mean? Total enrollment, sure. Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you very much for participating in this portion of the meeting, and we do appreciate it. And Holly, thank you for, thank you. That takes us back to the subject of form-based code, which in an ironic way is related to the theme of the night, which is, after all, demographics, I guess, although demographics with individual considerations.
It's not really demographics issue so much. We, we're, the Form-Based Code Committee is moving towards actually drafting the code, and one component of it is what would be non-conformities, what would be uses that would not be allowed in zones. We know one that we certainly wouldn't want to be involved or, or be in a certain zone, that'd be a methadone clinic, for instance, but I'm sure there's other things. And, and what I wanted to raise was, I was hoping that we wouldn't depend on me to figure out those things we want to exclude from around the area. I'm happy to give it a shot, but is this something that we should engage, I don't know, Pietro or somebody to, to do a little research and really make sure that we have, you know, a good proposal? I, I don't trust, I mean, I want to come there with a proposal of what the school wants, rather than have it just open for discussion in the committee.
Sure.
Which happens to be headed by Mike Semino, who would have a different viewpoint than what I'm going to have. You know, so I'd like some ammunition, I'm just wondering if we should, in fact, not rely on me and get a professional to, to give us, like, here's what we should be pushing at that point.
So in effect, is it your plan to propose a sort of school safety zone?
Yeah, essentially. Yeah, I mean, because, because we're talking city center, and it's, and it's broadening where they're actually going to be talking about the whole city in the context of form-based code. Potentially, I don't think, I don't know that the final decision's there to, to move beyond city center, but it may go that way. It may go that way.
So what you're doing would affect Marcot School?
First and foremost.
First and foremost.
Because that's the very word.
Doesn't directly relate to Chamberlain or the middle school?
But I, I do think that.
Maybe the middle schools.
It could, it could. I mean, that's, that's.
We don't know how big it's going to be?
I think, I think Martin brings up a good point. I mean, certainly, the focus is city center, and again, our, our, our beginning discussions with city in a much more deep way currently. You know, there is land currently preserved in, in South Burlington for school setting, and so in and around that location, for instance, form-based code governance could be applied to that particular location where there's designated spaces. So I think Martin's absolutely right to say, you know, providing clarity around what, what can be around a designated future location or current.
And, and it doesn't even have to be in the form-based code area, it's just, this is kind of where it's kind of coming from. If, if form-based code doesn't extend, we probably still want to propose to the Planning Commission updates in the regulations saying no methadone clinic. I know their grandfather, will be grandfathered in, the current methadone clinic, if it stays there. Maybe. You know, but, but the idea would be to, to now be proactive, now that we've seen this occur, let's, let's make sure that we get in there and have proposed, these kind of uses should be excluded.
Yeah, I think you're right, too. I think it would make sense to seek out some expertise there, because there are some, when, when, you know, I know I was personally doing some exploratory work on other towns' legislations of, around proximity to school, schools on other things than the methadone clinic. I mean, some of the new things that came up would be medical marijuana dispensaries, and , and another big one was pain management clinics, largely because of the narcotics and controlled substances as well. But I, I'm sure that was specific to medical use, and I'm sure there are some other venues that really just haven't come before this board are under consideration for South Burlington, that having some expertise, who could really dig into that.
Yeah, and I think, you know, industrial, okay, you know, if it's, you know, paint or automotive and paint, you know, some things that could, or, you know, either flammable, fumes, you know, all, all of those things.
Shooting range.
You know, yes. So I think it's, I think it's good, I don't know necessarily who, who would have the expertise to drive that. I think we could certainly begin with a conversation with somebody like a Pietro to say, who would you recommend? We want to make sure that we have some, you know, real logic applied to, you know, situations that might affect the, the, a school in South Burlington. So I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, it's just, I, I think that, I, the, the consultant who is running the show in the Form-Based Code understands the concept and has dealt with this kind of issue before, but I want to be in there well armed as an advocate for the school's position, as opposed to leaving the committee and my just arguing without, without being.
So the kind of, the kind of researcher thinking, who would look for is somebody to take a look at other communities that have done form-based code zoning, and, and look at whether they've addressed this issue, what kind of uses.
It doesn't have to be form-based, I mean, yeah, that would be the starting point, but it would be making sure we get something in the regs, be it through the Form-Based Code or Form-Based Code Plus, if it doesn't change the rest of the land use regs in South Burlington there as well, language that would prevent what has happened with the methadone clinic from happening in the future, with whatever the danger might be, that something moving nearby, being allowed to move by, that will cause increased risk to our safety of our kids.
Well, I assume Stitzel Paige is not available to us for this purpose, because they're advising the town.
Right, I, I'm, I was thinking, just as a, a beginning step, that we would go and just seek out what kind of advice we might get, and then, I think, bring it back to the rest of the board to say, you know, here's what, here's what, here's what the findings are, here's what the recommendations are, do you want to do? Again, we could do that. I, I think, somebody like, someone in Pietro's office, who certainly are connected to this type of work right now for us, I think they may have some insight on how to ensure that we have a positive move forward direction.
And making building insight as well. So is it the consensus of the board that we ought to ask, delegate the superintendent to seek some advice on a, on what would be an appropriate proposal for a school safety zone?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll work with Martin on that.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that takes us to item twelve on our agenda, nutritional services deficit. We have an opinion from council, which I have to, then I've only read very quickly.
Would you like a quick overview?
I think that'd be great, yeah.
So I'll ask John to give you a, a quick overview on the current status of nutrition service deficit.
What we did was, we went to Steve Stitzel for an opinion about what, what legally the school board needed to do or not to do. We've had, so I explained to him that our deficit's growing, it's estimated to be four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars at the end of this year, and that we had gotten some exhortation from our auditors to take care of the problem, because it's growing and it's not going to go away, and that we also got, asked for guidance from the Agency of Education about how the district would handle a deficit. So with that context, and all the documents that you've seen before from the state, I gave that to Steve to look at, and, basically, he looked at the, the state law and the city charter to see, the key question is, is the board required to make up the deficit in one year, which was implied or stated from the state of Vermont? What, what, what legal responsibility does the district have? And his email talks about short-term liabilities and long-term liabilities, current assets, et cetera. But I think the key, the key point is the last paragraph on the first page. It's our opinion that there's no requirement in Vermont law or the charter applicable to, to the district, that obligates the district to pay a transfer of funds from one fund established to another fund within the year of the transfer. Absent that, the district is under no legal enforceable obligation to have Nutrition Fund repay the General Fund within a year. It's for the board to decide if and when the loan is repaid. If it decides to establish an indefinite term for repayment, the Nutrition Fund is not, debt is not by definition a current liability, and the Nutrition Fund does not have a deficit subject to liquidation in accordance with section fifteen twenty-three B. What, what that means is that the General Fund, basically forgiving or funding the, the debt of the Nutrition Service Fund, it's, it's up to the board, it's up to the district to decide how to do that. And his next paragraph is another exhortation, to have a plan, take care of it, and ensure that the auditors and, and the state knows of what our plan is in, in agreement, and this would all take place with our budget discussions for FY fifteen.
So there was a key sentence in here that I want to make sure I understand, that Steve said, it is for the board to decide if and when the loan is repaid. Does it really mean?
If.
If?
Well.
We can decide as, as.
It's on the, there is a deficit on the books, it's, it's, it's there, it's real. It, it, the board would decide in the budget how much of that to repay, so yes, that's, that's true.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we've been in this situation where we've forgiven monies that have been owed for whatever, so I think that's accurate.
Okay. I mean, I'm still not sure that I understand our. I mean, I'm still not sure that I understand our options. I think that, of course, this may be an example of confirmation bias on my part, but I think what this means is we could do what I have suggested we ought to do, which is to realize that we spent the money. We've paid the bill. We don't owe anybody anything. It doesn't really do our nutritional services program any good to carry on this debt that it seems unlikely that it's going to be able to repay. That we could forgive this debt and have no budgetary implications. But I'm not sure that's what this says.
Yeah, I think that that's what it says, but if we do that, do our balance sheets all of a sudden, if we forgive that debt, do we have that much less money for carryover?
Well, do you write it off as not a debt expense?
If you think about what our consolidated balance sheet looks like, the nutritional services fund has a debt of 300, I'll call it $350,000. It happens to be owed to the general fund. The general fund has a liability of $350,000. It happens to come from nutritional services. So if you assume that our net worth was otherwise zero, our net worth would still be zero if the nutritional services fund didn't owe the general fund $350,000. That's what I've been trying to say for three years.
Yeah, I mean, the way I would look at it, Rich, is I would be inclined, we have agreed to kind of a, I think we're like a three-year plan with routine updates to the board on progress. I mean, my inclination would be, and that wasn't just to get to break even, that was to hopefully cover some of this debt. But, I mean, I would look at it and say the inclination I would have would be continue to monitor the plan, but have the plan be at the end of the three-year period, what's the decision going to be? Either some of that debt will have been paid down and the balance is written off, or none of it has been. And, I mean, if none of it has been and there's incremental deficit, we will get to that decision sooner because of the monitoring we have in place. So it gives a period of time for a new individual and some of these proposed remedies to be realized before that decision gets made.
If we continue to carry it, John, will it be, continue to be an issue in our management letter?
Oh, it will, yes, yes.
But if we communicate a plan per Steve's message, it doesn't sound like it has to happen in the current year.
All I'm trying to advocate for though, Elizabeth, is this. If this program were able to break even on a consistent basis and provide for the nutritional needs of our students in a way that is consistent with the educational values of the district, we would be very happy. So why do we ask it to do more than what we really intend for it to do? Why do we, do we look for it to return money to the district that we don't need because we already, we already spent the money?
Because it was supposed to have been break even all along.
I surely would deal with somebody who's in an arm-length relationship with us that way. But, you know, I don't think it really gets us anywhere with this program.
My concern with it, Rich, is that then we fundamentally, I mean, what's given this the sense of urgency is the fact that the deficit has grown as high as it has. And I think, I think the challenge should be, what's going to fundamentally change? My concern would be if it's forgiven, then the same practices could continue again until five years from now. Whoever sits on this board is having the conversation again, so-
They can if you let it.
I think there's a sense of urgency and a visibility when you tie a price tag to something that kind of is going to get the routine monitoring it's going to get. And it goes away. I mean, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, and I understand what you're saying, you know, I I don't agree, but I get it, you know, I get it.
Mr. Chairman, I think that there's an analogous roadmap here. Outgoing presidents give pardons, outgoing board chairs could do the right thing.
He can't do anything like so.
I don't think I can do that. My understanding of the limits of my powers is that they are to implement the decisions of this board, not to make them my own. But I appreciate it.
So it was a close cousin.
Yeah. This turkey will have to stand or fall on its own.
We did have our interim audit-
The turkey being the debt, not our program.
Agreed.
I'm sorry, John, go ahead.
That's okay. We had our interim audit in this year, or this week. And the audit manager was a business manager in Maine for many years and he joined a CPA firm. His experience in the last year has been that nutritional services across that state, and they do 70 school districts, are having a very tough time breaking even. So, and that was a different auditor than we had talked with before, Rich, so it's just, it's going to be challenging.
And the sad and other side of that coin is McDonald's is not. You know, which I think points to the basic issue here for us. You know, we don't have the same values that McDonald's has. It's not about making money, it's about providing good nutrition for these kids.
Right.
Well, and that's overlaid, though. But that's overlaid by what I understand to be some potentially rigorous and unreasonable federal guidelines, too.
Sure, sure. Is there a motion? To take any action at this point? I would say, to be honest with you, that much as I'd like to see this get resolved and I, even if you were interested in moving in the direction I'm suggesting, I think the auditor ought to say, yeah, this is gonna, you know, given legal opinion, this isn't going to mean anything before I would suggest you do that. And I understand at least one member of the board doesn't want to do that, so. You know, that's where we sit. Oh, it's listed as an action item. I don't know if we're ready for action.
Well, again, it's on there. I mean, you folks have heard about it, talked about it, understand it, know it. I mean, I think there's many different ways in which we can spin it, you know, and I, I get what you're saying. I very fundamentally say that we've had an enterprise program. It's a separate program that has been expected to run in and on its own, took a loan from the district essentially over time, and has an embedded amount of money that's owed. I think we have absolutely the obligation, because if that money hadn't been used there, it would have been used perhaps to carry forward money, a variety of things. And I think it, as much as I'd like to agree that it be written off or whatever, or forgiven, it's not the right thing. And again, I'm not your, I'm not John and I'm not the auditor, but from my perspective, this program, we made it whole and complete and paid for all of what we have made it pay for over the years with added benefits and added, and they've taken that loan. And you can blame me, I have not monitored that accumulation of debt or the loan that we've been paying, and I think we got to pay it, we got to pay it back. And the plan in front of you is to, to make that happen.
So I just want to be clear what the implication of that is, because there is a real implication. And that is this, I don't know what, by what percentage, the prices have to be higher in order to pay back that loan. But I know there is a percentage. It's 1%, it's 4%, it's 6% that they have to be higher. Now, the other thing I know, I'm not an economics scholar, but the higher you raise your price, the lower your utilization is going to be. So this is not a free decision to carry this debt. And I say to you, don't do it. Let it go. Enough said.
No, I agree with that point completely. And I would like to understand if the new director of the nutritional services is, I know a big part of what they're going to try to do is expand usage. And does decreasing the price, is that one of the options on the table, or are there other things, marketing, et cetera, to expand usage? And if we see that the usage is expanding with the current prices, not having to raise the price, and we're starting to nibble away at that deficit, you know, let's see what happens with that. I agree with you. If the answer is that we're going to raise prices to pay down this deficit, it makes no sense to me whatsoever because our number one priority is to get nutrition into these kids. But I'd also like to understand, over the next few months, when we revisit this again, I mean, what really is the implication of saying, can we say this debt is forgiven? I mean, I, John, I get the feeling from you that that's not necessarily that easy to do, but I'd really like to understand, you know, we see it from the legal letter, the opinion that we can do it, but what does the auditor really think? If we're going to forgive this debt, I mean, we should have a little more information from this letter from the auditor.
I'll disagree with that.
So.
I think a key point to this is our budget preparation is in the fall. And the auditors will be here the week of October 28th, but they'd be prepared to come and talk and help us with the budget this year. And I think that's a real key time. And we also will have our new nutrition service director on board, but it'll be, you know, two months into it, so really-
Right, right. So I mean, if we can, if we can hold off on putting $100,000 or whatever towards paying down this deficit in the budget because we might not have to, you know, I know that's in the budget season, but because we have two things going. One is our new nutrition services director who might in fact be able to increase usage and nibble away at this deficit, that's one. The second thing is that we could just forgive it. I mean, I'd like to understand that we can just forgive it, certainly.
Well, the forgiveness, with forgiveness, there'd have to be funds there in the general fund to be able to forgive it.
Okay, so that means that we-
I don't think so. That's not what that letter says.
Right, yeah, that, okay. So we still, now we've defined where the disagreement's still revving.
Yep. So I think at some point, our auditors ought to be asked, given this opinion, is it still your view that we have to find $350,000 to put into the general fund in order to do this, which I don't think is right?
You know what I want to do? I want to put, how many times we've had readings on this, because I'm starting to feel like-
This might be bigger.
We're going to be bigger than the other one.
Yes, please.
Irene, Sarah. I just want to say that I think one of the biggest areas that we're looking at changing the amounts of money in this deficit is staff benefits. You guys are setting staff negotiation contracts where we have to pay all these benefits to people that our department just can't afford. A lot of the girls in this department make more in benefits than they make in wages for the year, when you get your W-2. And that's where these cuts are going to have to come from, changing from full-time employees to part-time employees. And we are going to lose so much in quality and the caring and the relationships in our district by doing this. But that's really, realistically, where the cuts are going to come from. Because we can change food quality a little bit and we can take some cuts here and there, but really, the biggest chunk of it is going to come from labor and changing those benefits. And it's just difficult for nutritional services to support the level of benefits that the school board is saying that we have to support.
Well, that's the next step. That's what higher revenues mean, is, you know.
Well, again, there's been good work and we don't need to go down that road with a new director and staff like Irene and the work that Win did, the internal and external groups that did that work. And there's some recommendations down there around hiring expectations and staffing levels and some of those things. So those are certainly in play.
All right, given the hour, there's nothing more on this subject, we'll go to the annual board calendar and work plan. Are we ready for action on this item? Not much on it. Just a few little things to do.
You should be in the, you want to add a few down, don't you?
Oh, no, not me. Not me.
So you were just, we're talking about enterprise services, nutrition services, those are showing up.
And there it is in August, port only.
Pretty, pretty busy.
So David, is nutrition services, is that the same as the thing you have on the calendar in November? Enterprise services?
No, well, we have other enterprise services as well.
So like, schools out, that's what you're talking about?
Right, yeah. It doesn't exclude that one from being talked about also, you know.
Is there a motion to approve the board agenda and work plan for 1314?
So moved?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It's approved. Agenda for July 10. We have a draft agenda here. Are there any proposed changes for this draft agenda?
Actually, I would like to put a short update. Martin and I and Ray Mann, who you met earlier, wanted to talk a little bit about this voter information feedback. We may or may not be ready for that. We'll see. We have another meeting tomorrow, which I need to respond back to on a time chain, I think. But I'd like to just let you know that it might be on there. We'll see after tomorrow whether it gets added based on how much info we've collected. So that would be-
I wondered, on number 12, since we have the nutritional services debt, I mean, I don't know if by crisis-
You want to cross some of these off, don't you?
Yeah.
Well, since that's on, we've got that on.
It's on the regular calendar.
Yeah, we could take that out.
This is voting data, that's on.
And then crisis planning, do you mean school, is that school safety, like?
Yeah, again, just update around, about school safety. Again, our crisis work, again, I think this could also encompass, you know, greater campus security and safety. A lot of our work that we've done as a district, and again, there's been a fair amount of that. So that was the purpose of that, just giving an update.
And is feedback process on the annual work plan? I think-
There is a feedback, I assume that that's with the September report on teacher-staff evaluation, is that what you're talking about?
No.
Or is that the other feedback process?
No, this is our, this is our feedback and, what do we call it on the bottom, and opportunities.
Because that was something that we wanted sooner than later, if I remember.
It was in the third, which we, but I didn't get to it.
Right, so we-
Just how the feedback opportunities process is working, right? And so, we-
I didn't know if we could fit that in.
Can you maybe think about August?
Yeah, I think it would be great to have it done in time for a new school year to start, so we're really solid on what our process is.
Do you want to try to put it on the calendar? Or just make it on that agenda? Or you want to leave it up to me to try to fit it in before August?
I think the census is just fit it in before the end of August.
Okay.
So is nutrition services debt going to stay on in August, or is that going to come off because you're going to do it in October?
It'll come off the future agenda items.
We should still be getting it.
Should certainly be an update on this program.
And did we say voting data can come off, too, because it's on the calendar?
Well, maybe it's on the calendar, so maybe you should leave it there.
I'm just saying, comes off the future agenda.
Yeah, I think you can take it off the-
Oh, I see it. It's on the, it's on the work plan.
So you can take it off the future ones. And Martin and I will talk about whether or not we're ready to have it pop up for immediate.
Do we need to put the board vacancy reorg and potentially swearing in?
You want to do that on July 10?
Yeah, and we're going to do-
You're not ready to do that as an add-on to our June 24 meeting.
You got to get to the right one.
We could do that.
This would be a regular public session.
Yeah, but I mean, we could have a public session at that special meeting.
She'll be here for the swear, we'll get her to swear the new board number in.
Rich is asking if that should be an agenda item on the 24th instead of the special meeting.
Right, probably would be better.
Why not?
We'll add it.
So what am I adding?
Okay, so on the 24th-
Filling board member's vacancy, a public session, public part of the June 24 meeting.
Yeah.
Beginning or in the beginning?
Well, we do it right at the beginning.
I do it at the beginning, then we'll have Donna swear the individual in.
For well. And you can't really do that till I'm gone.
Right.
Oh, we can't?
That's right.
But you can do it July 1st.
Yeah, but we're probably better, we're probably to keep, you could announce it on-
You make the decision and then-
And then on July, we could figure out a way to have the individual just meet up and be sworn in with Donna July 1, or whatever time works.
I think that's the cleanest.
And not make it a board, there'd need to be a warrant meeting to do that. It just needs to be sworn in. Board action could happen on the, on the 24th, right, of June.
David, would number seven be action instead of discussion if you can do to the teacher of the town?
Yes, it would, that would change to action.
Good call.
Thank you.
That's why you're here, Holly.
Somebody must be a chair.
As much as you like hearing it discussed.
So, do we need to add, or is it here, and I'm just, my eyes are so blurry at this point, I'm not seeing it, reorganization of the board? point, I'm not seeing it, reorganization of the board?
Oh, that's another issue.
We could do that on the 24th, but nothing would be effective till July 1st.
We should do that, too.
Yeah, let's do that.
All of that could be effective July 1.
I'm not going to be there at the 24th, but I don't think that matters.
Good, then we know what we're doing.
I'll carry your question. It would seem like to me, I mean, I'm just trying to think that through a little bit. So, from a perspective of transparency, it would seem to me that we have, Rich, here until the 24th. It would seem to me to be cleaner if we either had a special meeting July 1 or forward and to do it all there. So, yes, I think you could make your announcement about the new candidate, but I think it would be cleaner that you do board reorganization with the new board member present.
Well, yeah, I just think the new board member should be part of the reorganization.
Right, and so, having it on the 24th...
Is it really right?
Wouldn't be right.
Yeah, okay.
So, would it be the first, like, July 10th, the first board meeting?
That's correct.
I don't think that should happen, though, because we have some meetings between July 1 and July 1.
Right, so we...
But you, as a clerk, would just take steps into the position.
You'd be acting chair.
You'd be acting chair until the 10th.
But would the new person be on board?
Sure. Once they're sworn in?
Okay, so, yeah, so everything would happen, just the transparent action would take place in the 10th, okay?
Yeah.
We're back to the 10th, Delana.
So, let me, so, let me, let me summarize for Delana. If I understand what the board intends to do, it is to take action at the public meeting on the 24th to fill the vacancy.
Yes.
To take action at the first July meeting to reorganize the board.
Yeah.
Okay? Fair enough?
July meeting, which I don't know about yet, I guess.
The 10th.
10th, yeah, the 10th.
The first...
Because in the interim, the clerk would function as chair and his clerk.
And we would, in the interim, get the new board member to be sworn in.
Sworn in, and be ready to be present for the reorganization discussion meeting.
And any other meetings for July.
And any other, that's correct. They're an active board member then.
Yep. Good. And, you know, if there's, if there were a need for me to get out of the way quicker, I could do that. But I don't think there's a pressing need for that, so, but I could do it.
Being very...
Yeah.
That's good.
One of the things that's always a good practice is to have a new board member orientation prior to stepping into that new role.
Yeah, I typically have done that, but you guys, on boarded.
All right. So, I think we've got the agenda set for July 10.
Yep.
I think we've already talked about future agenda items. We don't need to go over item 15 any further, do we? That takes us to the minutes of June 3. Are there any corrections or amendments to the minutes of June 3? I don't hear any. Without objection, are the minutes of June 3 approved? June, they are. June 5, any corrections or amendments to the minutes of June 5? I don't see any. Without any objection, those minutes are approved. That takes us to the consent agenda, which includes the hires better listed and some additional new hires.
Which are at your, at your place.
At your place. Any questions or concerns about the consent agenda? Without objection, the consent agenda would be approved if there are no objections. If there are no objections, it's approved. That takes us to the tax anticipation note, an action item. John, do you have anything to tell us about the tax anticipation note?
Two things. Our cash balance is down this year, so our cash flow, because we've spent down our fund balance, our cash flow, this is a higher note than we've had for a couple of years in, to get us through to the first tax payment and to get the money on September 5. The second note is I've never seen an interest rate this low on a tax note, ever. 1.1, 2 percent. So, that's good. That'll keep our borrowing costs down. And we're able to draw this money as we need it, so we don't have to borrow the whole amount, right, and keep it out there, so...
And the recommendation is to accept the low bid, which is from the Merchant's Bank.
That's correct, yes.
Any questions or comments about the tax anticipation note? Is there a motion to approve the administration's recommendation on the tax anticipation note?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It's approved.
The...
Does it require the signatures of all board members on the note?
Tonight, there's a commitment, just you sign.
Okay.
And then Monday, they'll have the actual loan documents at that meeting.
Good. Thank you, John. That takes us to lease for laptops and school bus lease, also an action item. Any comments about that, John?
Questions, it did come in. I know, John, you might have responded to some of those questions around the lease questions, so, you know.
Just ask her. I was satisfied with the answers.
Once again, the interest rate on this is outstanding. It's about 40 basis points less than last year's lease, and it helped us budgetarily because we, it's about $11,000 less on our computers and $3,000 less on the bus than we have in the budget. So, this is, this is very good.
Or no, because it won't last forever. Is there a motion to approve the administration's recommendation on the laptop, computers, and school bus?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It's approved. And again, do we need signatures tonight?
There's just a commitment there, and then Steve Spitz will give us a legal opinion on this, and it'll be on the July 10th.
Okay.
If there's any action, he'll have the resolution then.
All right. There's nothing, really needs to be said about the accounts payable orders. Any further announcements?
No, I kind of front-loaded those in the beginning, and again, I think fitting to just reaffirm our appreciation for you, Rich, and your 12 years. I do think also, you know, fitting for me to say, you know, a personal thank you to Win. This is also marks his last, and we have a variety of things we're doing as well and have been for him, but I do think it's appropriate to note, you know, the strong support that he's given to me and this district. I'm very appreciative. I know that, you know, I'm sad in a way, again, but moving forward a district is not always easy, and he's been right there with me, helping me to do some of this hard work and including even the current state that we're in with him. So, I just want to, you know, publicly thank him for his time with us. I look forward to staying connected with him throughout the years. We have many, I think, initiatives and ideas that are in play in Vermont education that I think will continue to cross paths many, many times. So, I just wanted to publicly announce and say thank you, Win, for that.
And Win, for myself and for the board, it's been really a pleasure to work with you and a pleasure to get to know you better, and we thank you very much as well and wish you the best.
Thank you.
Wonderful experience, and it's been a couple of decades since I've been back in school.
Yeah.
It's changed me better.
Yeah, but that youthful energy is still there, isn't it, in the buildings?
That it is.
It's pretty amazing. It really is.
I'm not totally done with him yet. We've got stuff going on, so I won't be clear about that, but anyway.
All right. If there are no other announcements, then it's, we're ready for adjournment. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, one and all.